Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular City Council Jacksonville Beach City Council meeting on February 23rd, 2022. On me will begin with our opening ceremonies, which will be an invocation provided by Council Member Dan Jansen and the salute to the flag presented to us by my sons of Girl Scout Troop 64003. If you guys want to go ahead and come on around the front, just line up right here, and we'll do the invocation followed by the pledge. Please rise.
Let us pray. Good grace, heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you give us each and every day. Lord, we just ask you with the turmoil that's going on around this world that you pour up your grace. And, Lord, we ask you to pour that grace over our first responders and our military who will keep peace. Lord, we just thank you so much for the salvation that your son provides. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the whole of the Republicans, one nation under God, indivisible, with the reprieve of justice for all.
Good job.
All of the functional legions with some goddamn we need you guys here more often. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam, where can we get a hold of? Councilmember Dumont?
Here.
Councilmember Golding?
Here.
Councilmember Jansen?
Here.
Councilmember Mesa?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
Mayor Hoffman? Here. Moving on to approval of 11 minutes, item A.
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on February 7th, 2022.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I would like to thank Mayor Portland Nichols for chairing the meeting in my absence. I appreciate that and keeping it under an hour. Well done.
You're very welcome. Follow your lead.
Appreciate that. I don't think this one is going to be that way. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
I move that we approve the minutes from the council briefing held on February 14th, 2022.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements? Ms. Golding.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to send out a huge congratulations to the Fletcher Girl Scout team who defeated Vieira on last Friday, three to one, to advance to the state six A championship. They will be playing in Deland on Friday, this Friday at 1:05, and hopefully they'll come back state champions. So, congratulations to them.
First of all, I want everyone to know, since we've got a great crowd here, that this Saturday and Sunday, we have the Sea Walk Music Festival out here at the Sea Walk Pavilion, and there's been music all day until 9 o'clock on Saturday and 7 o'clock on Sunday, and we hope that you guys will come out and enjoy it. And then just want to let everyone know that Beaches Watch is hosting a state of the Duval Schools meeting on Wednesday, March 2nd, at 7 o'clock. The speakers are our school board rep for the Beaches, Elizabeth Anderson, and the school superintendent, Dr. Diana Green. And you can find a link to the meeting. It's a Zoom meeting, and you can find it at beacheswatch.com. Should be a very good meeting. They're going to provide updates about what's going on, particularly with the schools here, and there's been a lot of talk about tax increase and military increase, so I'm sure that will be covered as well. So I hope everyone will plan to attend that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golding. Ms. Dumont?
Thank you. I just want to say, great job to the Girl Scouts. You know, you moved Boy Scouts out of the water. We were discussing that. And the other thing is, back when I was a Girl Scout in the 70s, we used to have to put all those badges on a sash, and why did they give you more room for it?
Well done, ladies. Ms. Dumont? Ms... Mr. Mason?
Yes. Great job, Girl Scouts. You guys threw it out of the park. And second thing also, I'm glad everyone's here. I wish every council meeting was this packed. And third, last week there was a fire, house fire, and not 100% accurate, but I believe an officer went into the burning building to save a couple of the people. So I think, I don't know if we could look into it, maybe give them a word, but the house was in broken place. So I would like to congratulate the individual, and also, Jack's Beach is pretty hard by now working, trying to solve a homicide, so I hope they do, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. And also, since we have a big crowd, just to remind everyone that paid parking resumes the weekend of March 11th, I think, 11th is what? If you're a Jacksonville Beach resident, you still continue to get free parking, but you do have to pre-register your car. So make sure you go on to the beautiful new City of Jacksonville Beach website and check that out. And while we're celebrating Fletcher, I will make a shameless point. The Beaches Museum is bringing back the Fletcher All Class Block Party. That's going to be on April 30th. You don't have to have gone to Fletcher, but it helps if you like the color purple, because there's a lot of it there. And we're also going to be cooking off an exhibit, The History of Fletcher High School, which is turning 85 on September 20th this year. So it's going to be, of all things, Fletcher, senators, and purple. So keep an eye out for that. As you can tell, we have a very full room today, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that, but I have one courtesy of the floor speaker card that is not related to the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. So I'm going to go ahead and invite Shandy Thompson to come to the podium. Anyone who would like to address, you can see the rules for public comment there. You'll have three minutes. Please begin with your name and address.
My name's Shandy Thompson. I reside at 522 Third Avenue South, Jacksonville Beach, Florida, 32250. Okay. So, poor timing on my part. Not realize this was all going on. Way to wear your head and stand the wrong time. Okay, so my kids do lacrosse. They moved from San Pablo to Wingate, which is great. However, I have boys. I can easily see discrepancy. We have lights. The girls do not. So come 6:30, the girls are practicing in the dark. I think it'd be nice just to flip that switch for them. I think that would be cool, instead of them running around in the dark, especially with sticks and balls lying at our face. Second thing, I guess this part is kind of a lifeguard. March 1st, typically, summer camps start opening up. Me, as hundreds of other moms, are starting to freak out. A favorite of ours' kids is the Jacksonville lifeguard. It's not happening. Would really like to see that back. It's a favorite for kids. It's environmentally friendly. They get all the exercise, and they're not from the screen, which I actually love. So I just want to, as a parent, not involve this part. I would really appreciate to see that come back. It's beneficial for, I think, the community, and obviously, the lifeguards, I know, proceeds good to their organization. So, that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Shandy. Okay. Now, we're going to get on to the stack of 52 cards that I have in front of me. In case you are unfamiliar with what brings this extraordinary crowd to city council chambers, I just want to read, actually, my comment to the Beaches leader, just to briefly update everybody before we start with the speaker cards. So, "The City of Jacksonville Beach has had a longstanding relationship with the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. However, the findings of a recent Department of Labor investigation have prompted city administration to reevaluate the relationship and the separation between the employees of the Jacksonville Beach Ocean Rescue and the volunteers of the Corps. Discussions are ongoing with the two bodies, but it is my sincere hope that the BLSC and the city can continue this relationship, even though it may look different in the future. All organizations need to evolve to best meet the needs of those they serve, and I look forward to seeing what a future partnership may look like." So, we're going to go ahead and start through the speaker cards, and we do have the current and a few of the past presidents of the BLSC that are lined up to speak first. I would just ask, if you don't feel like you have to speak, if somebody's already said what was on your mind, do not feel obligated to speak. 50 speaker cards, Girl Scouts help me out, times three minutes. How many minutes is that? 150 minutes. How many hours? More than two hours. And if you see any of our cities department, we have a three-page agenda after that's done. So we want to make sure that we are concise and to the point, and there really is, there are no bonus points towards, this isn't a federal question. We're not taking a vote at the end. So please, if the point's already been made, and you just want to wave and say, hey, I support or I don't support, we welcome that too, and everyone else in the room after we get through these probably will too. So I would start with Mr. Tim Sargel, and you have three minutes. Start with your name and address.
Thank you, Tim Sargel. My address is 1009 Hydro Drive, Atlantic Beach, Florida, and I'm glad to be here. I am the president of the Board of Directors of Volunteer Life Saving Corps. I entered the Corps in the winter class of 1972 when I was 17 years old, senior at Fletcher 50 years ago. I've seen that long pretty well. The crowd here today is mostly Corps members and Corps family and friends. Why are we here? Chris answered some of that, but let me add a little bit to it. There was a Department of Labor investigation last year, Department of Labor Investigation last year, and we got a call to come to a meeting, myself and two other board members in the center. And many, many of you were there, the city manager, the city attorney, various other people. Chris was there. And we learned for the first time more about the Department of Labor Investigation. We had only heard rumors about it, but they said that the investigation was focusing on the city practice with the lifeguards, where we have paid lifeguards Monday through Saturday, and then that paid lifeguard puts on another suit and works down sanitation, and he's a volunteer on Sunday. And the city said the Department of Labor found violation of the Federal Labor Standards Act based on that relationship. And we were kind of fooled. We didn't see this coming. They said that they had agreed to voluntary compliance with the Department of Labor, which involved back pay for two years to people who worked on Sundays and holidays as volunteers. And effective January 1st, they began to pay the lifeguards who worked on Sunday and Monday. So you can imagine, all this in 20 minutes, we were shocked. They were describing to us the end of the Volunteer Life Saving Corps that has guarded these beaches since 2012. We have, we left that meeting. It was, we pulled together some legal help, we got some past presidents of the board to help out. It was Christmas time. It was very difficult to get things done, COVID and the holidays, but we were trying to figure out a strategy that would change the whole direction. It was too late to do that. So we switched, and we went to a strategy of, we were going to put together a complete volunteer corps that would be completely separate from the paid guards they regard on Sunday and holidays. And we thought that would pass muster with the Department of Labor. I see, I'm almost running out of time, my goodness. We met with Mike and Chris yesterday, and we had a very good discussion about the proposal. We looked at some of the issues that the city manager said were the Department of Labor raise, and we all did some suggestions. And Mike said he called me today with, after we talked to the attorneys. He called me this morning. Our initial conversation, he was reluctant to move forward with our discussion, and they were focusing on the seven-day paid lifeguards. We had a later discussion, and the end of that was, he asked me to submit a formal proposal based on our meeting the day before, and we are going to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got it? You were so close.
It was shorter than I thought.
I know, I know. You don't got it.
Thank you, Mayor Charles Bond, 2032 Dunavista Court, Atlantic Beach, Florida. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Charles Bond, and I joined the Volunteer Life Saving Corps in the winter of 1998. I've served the community and the Corps for eight years. I was captain in 2007, I retired in 2005. I was, I'm now a past president of the Board of Directors, and I've been involved for over 24 years. I'm no longer a citizen of Jacksonville Beach, but at one time I considered this small town my home. My parents and sister currently live in Jackson Beach, and their greater families here. I'm here tonight to ask the mayor and the city council for their leadership in helping us resolve this horrible situation we've been thrust into. The Corps is a beacon for good. It's a unique organization unlike any other that we've known in the world, and it lives here in the heart of our community. The BLSC is a hidden gem, part of the fabric of this community. We've been here since before Jackson Beach was actually Jacksonville Beach. And to my knowledge, we're one of the first chapters of the American Red Cross. We were founded in 1912, we were chartered in 1914. The Life Saving Corps, aside from my family, has shaped my future, excuse me, more than any other institution I've ever belonged to. More than my days in grade school, my time at Fletcher High School, my time at University of Florida in Gainesville. And I learned more about leadership and civic duty within the halls and the walls of Number Two Oceanfront than I have in the entirety of my life since. Today's a sad day. Without change in position, our 110-year organization will dissolve. And unfortunately, there will never be anyone like it. Fortunately for me and my friends and my family, we will go on with the memories and experiences that we've gained from our time volunteering in the beach. My life trajectory is set in motion, but my heart breaks for the current young generation who will not have the same opportunities that I was granted. The future generation of my kids will not get to experience what it's like to save a life while serving their community in an organization that wants no recognition at all, that is all volunteer. It's the act of volunteering that teaches us the life lessons which we will take with In a world where social media dominates the fabric of our lives, the BLSC offers a different perspective for success like none I've ever seen. Our members go on to be firing into police officers, FBI agents, military special forces, nurses and doctors. What better light could you shine on your community than to show you have a training ground for the future leaders of America? I'm asking everyone here tonight to stand for this organization in our time of need. The battle will be won, or all will be lost. We are literally fighting and in a fight for our survival, and only you can help us cross the finish line. The members of this organization want nothing in return for our service. We simply ask that you allow us to continue our humanitarian mission and help keep the bayers and beachgoers of this city safe when they are in peril of drowning. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Maurice Rudolph, 896 Jacksonville Beach. I am a constituent of you guys and glad to be here tonight. I got into the Life Saving Corps in the winter of '87. I've been a captain in 1998 and 2002, past president in 2012 when the Life Saving Corps turned 100 years old. I was blessed enough to be the Northeast Florida American Red Cross Chairman when the Red Cross turned 100 years old in 2014. With that being said, I've become very good at centurying and the birthday parties, but at the same time, I've become very good at leading volunteers and recruiting volunteers, so I know what it takes to keep this organization alive. Today, I want to talk to you guys about the backbone of the Corps. The backbone of the BLSC is made up of men and women who are thoroughly trained to respond promptly regardless of time or place. These men and women of the BLSC give themselves before, give of themselves before asking them for anything in return. These are fine young citizens, and their service are who I'm here to represent today. These folks, who at a young age decide that their first job will have no pay, that their, that their first job will be saving lives at no cost to anyone, that their first job is one of sacrifice in their community. Isn't it amazing that in today's world, when most of us pay for people's gas so they can come to work, beg others to take a job, and where we must continuously adapt to keep our teams productive, we are standing here tonight asking for deeper thought into how we can keep our great Volunteer Life Saving Corps, organization that has been consistently producing great citizens for 110 years. Isn't this what we want in our society? These men and women are learning the principles of hard work, charity, and service in one mission, saving lives. In a recent meeting with city manager and the mayor, we talked about the critical mission of the volunteers, which is sitting a lifeguard tower, watching over people who trust them with their family, enacting when someone is in great danger. The reward these men and women receive for saving someone's life is not monetary. It is a lifelong memory of the faces of those rescued and family members who fell to the ground in gratitude for saving their children's lives. This memory fuels us to continue our service without pay and to continue helping people when in need. These memories are what give our volunteers what they need to succeed in life and the tenacity to deal in tough situations. These are your business leaders and community leaders in the future. Therefore, I stand before you today, without our ability to sit the beach and continue our life-saving mission, our organization will cease to exist. This is the last Life Saving Corps in our nation. The lifeblood of this organization are volunteers, and the heartbeat of the organization is the opportunity to save lives, just as previous members have been doing for 110 years. Our ask is city staff and council to take deeper thought in this issue and collaboration with us, so we can work together, continue to grow a sustainable relationship. Thank you for your time.
Michelle Barnett, 1500 Riverside Avenue, Jacksonville, Florida. In 1912, Juliette Gordon-Lau founded the Girl Scouts. I find it ironic, but it is also in 1912, a few steps from where we are tonight, that the Volunteer Life Saving Corps started its mission of volunteerism in serving this very community. We think of the Girl Scouts. Ms. Dumont, you mentioned how it's changed, it's evolved over the years. Thank goodness I chose the Girl Scouts for that sash. And today, Girl Scouts wear vests, and they sell different kinds of cookies, and they sell things online, and they do things different than they did, but still, the core value of the Girl Scouts remains the same, to teach girls to do good, to learn how to be good volunteers, to learn how to serve our community. A lot of the same exact mission that is the core of the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. Now, I'm here tonight because I represent the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. I'm an attorney. I'm an employment attorney. This is what I do every day, all day. I help employers figure out, how do you do things legally within the confines of the law? And I work with the Department of Labor on a regular basis. Now, I was involved in the negotiations with the Department of Labor. I will tell you all that since I was engaged in late December, I've talked to your lawyer, I've talked to your outside lawyer, and I've talked to the Department of Labor. And unfortunately, the investigation is still technically ongoing. What does that mean? Even though you all have reached a resolution with the Department of Labor, you're still paying back wages, and so we can't see all of the documents. But from my conversations, there are two things that are of concern primarily. The first is the payment of overtime. In the United States, any hourly employee who works more than 40 hours has to be paid time and a half of the minimum wage. I think we all understand that and know that. Here, one of the things that the Department of Labor was concerned with is that you had people getting paid Monday through Saturday, and then on Sunday, doing the same job, which pushed them over that 40-hour limit, and they weren't getting paid in that volunteer position through the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. The other issue, the second issue that I understood to be the situation from the Department of Labor and from talking to many of you, is that some people believe that in order to get a job at the city as a lifeguard, you had to work for the Volunteer Life Saving Corps first. Like the Girl Scouts, the Volunteer Life Saving Corps is prepared to change, and we've made the suggestion to the city that we can stack Sundays and holidays with volunteers who are not also employed by the City of Jacksonville Beach. We can provide our own equipment, we can provide our own training. We simply need to sit down, have a conversation, and come up with a reasonable way so that we can both get back in our seat belts, back on our side of the car, and on the road in the right direction. Thank you all, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And for the four leadership cards given to me in that particular order, the rest are as they were handed in and handed to me. Again, do not feel obligated to approach the day, so if you just want to leave from your seat, that is your choice, but I'm just going to go through. The first one is Nikki, I'm sorry, Nikki Kopa? Nikki Kopa?
Yeah, Nikki Kopa.
Nikki Kopa.
And if we could keep the chatter and the thoughts to a minimum, that would help us move quickly through these. Thank you.
Just for the record, I have a problem having to follow those guys that are with their cars in order. My name's Nikki Kopa.
And your address?
I'm sorry. 2312 Forbes Drive, Jacksonville, 32224. I grew up in the city, and I didn't know anything about the beach. My friend told me about the lifeguards, and I said I was interested in kind of challenge. My friend Mike LeBar is a special agent FBI agent. Anyway, I came out here, and it was at that moment that I learned that it wasn't about me. Volunteering was not, you're coming out here, it's not come out and work. It wasn't about that. It was about thinking about more than yourself, and that's what I learned. I'll never forget my first rescue. That sticks with you for the rest of your life. When you're in a panic situation, you know what to do. And that was never more evident than one time my wife, God bless her soul, she left the candle on, and house on was lit on fire. I didn't know what to do, that was going up. Anyway, my point being is I was calm, took care of the problem, and we escaped. That's what going out of the water and saving lives does to you. I don't think you guys understand what it does and how it is a big break in the foundation of our lives and has led us to be who we are. I am begging you guys to reconsider this. I don't want to think of where I'd be in my life, and I think most of these guys would also say the same thing. They don't want to think of where their life would be without this organization. All we're asking for is to continue doing what we've been doing for 110 years. Nothing more, nothing less. We're asking for no financial help. We're asking for no equipment. We just want to do what we want to do. You're basically taking a restaurant that's been around 110 years, and you're telling the chef, hey, we like what you've been doing, but however, we can't work with you anymore. We're going to put you to the side. Well, no, the chef says, hey, I just want to work. I'll bring my own equipment, I'll bring my own food. That's all we want to do. We want to continue providing the service that we've provided this beach. And I'll just leave one last note. I don't know if you guys are aware, but those guys came from in town. There was no city government. We were here before you guys were here. They had to come in through the train on their own with their own people, and you just want to throw us out. I did junior lifeguards for nine years. I probably did her child. I see junior guards back here. There was nothing more enjoyable than seeing a junior guard come through that class in graduation. And I will say one last thing. Best day of my life was the day I ran that belt line and got that blue jersey.
Matthew Lyden, would you like to address?
Yes, I would.
Start with your name and address.
Thank you all for having me. My name is Matthew Lyden. I reside at 597 Seventh Avenue South, Jacksonville Beach, Florida, 32250. I'll keep it short. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for having me. By not allowing the BLSC to sit the beach as volunteer lifeguards, the ultimate outcome will be the complete capitulation of the BLSC. That is our primary mission, regardless of what our constitution says. The BLSC is difficult to understand from the outside, but I can assure you, like the many generations that went before me, long before any of us, that the whole is worth more than some of its parts. I beg you, we cannot let the BLSC disappear silently into the night. We cannot allow sweat and tears of many to vanish with the wave of the tide. Thank you.
Curtis Loftus, 1280 Mayport Landview Drive, Atlantic Beach, Florida. Hello, everyone. Good to see you. Thank you. Glasses. This thing's getting old. All right, so, by the way, it's an honor to be here. You know how many times I've been asked, are you a member of the Corps? I'll explain in just a second here. I've got about 33 years here in the Beaches community, small business owner, and in 2013, I founded Deck the Chairs. That's a Jackson Beach nonprofit. Actually, off script, in 2011, I set a world record off the beach here, right in front of the lifeguard station. That was actually the first, first time I got a chance to actually meet these guys like Rob and Tommy. They protected me. They actually, for just 29 hours, I think, stayed with me through the night, right in the ocean. the ocean with me, covered my butt as I was, you know, surfing for, goodness, it was a extraordinary moment. So here's the preface for today. I got inspired by the Volunteer Life Saving Corps in 2011, really inspired by the way they behaved, how they served, and in 2013, I founded Deck the Chairs. It was inspiration through public service. So, here we go. Um, I think there's no other city anywhere in America as special as Jacksonville Beach. Pristine oceanfront, intercoastal waterways, loads of natural resources, parks, amenities, year-round active, active life, physical responsibility, reasonable cost of living, welcoming people, strong on public safety. I'm fortunate to call the beaches home and especially Jacksonville Beach. So beyond live, work, and play, what makes us unique to other seaside communities? In my years of study and serving in various civic capacities, there is one very special asset that truly marks Jacksonville Beach as special, as unique. And that one thing is the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. 1912, you already heard, the Volunteer Life Saving Corps was founded. Its historical significance is beyond measure from the tens of thousands of men and women selflessly serving hundreds of hours, thousands of volunteer hours, the millions of dollars that it's saved the city, you know, millions of dollars cost savings to the city. No city anywhere in America or across the globe has this story. Later this year, God willing, there will be once again a few dozen uniquely qualified million souls preparing to serve our city like generations before, marking us as a special place to live. They've done this for 110 years. The VLSC marks a century of summer traditions ensuring, oh, I'm out, comment?
You didn't start and talk till like halfway through.
I apologize, but honestly, you can't help but be inspired by these men and women and I'd hate to see it lost. And I know that there's things already done in this city from a public standpoint with the police department and how, you know, they serve and how the citizens on patrol serve, there's a lot of ways to look at this, so good luck with what you're doing. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. State your name and address, you have three minutes to address the council.
Evening, my name is Thomas Cissaro, 611 11th Avenue North, Jacksonville Beach, Florida, 32250. Good evening and thank you for having us, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Just a little bit about myself and why I'm here. I really wish I could say I was truly happy to be here tonight, but these are quite unfortunate circumstances that we're all having to deal with right now. But a little bit about me, I was 16 years old when I joined the Life Saving Corps in 2005. Like most other 16-year-olds, I was lost without direction and just kind of going through the breeze. The Life Saving Corps not only gave me the tools to move forward, but instead rocketed me in that direction. Most of you lifeguards, as they watch parties or just a fun summer job, but in fact, it was quite the opposite for us. Surrounded by doctors, special forces, military personnel, lawyers, engineers, business owners, it gave me, along with most other young influential 16, 17, 18-year-old children, college students, a direction to follow and a way to move through the fog. We all know the benefits of these guards, you know, as far as our Volunteer Life Saving Corps. We have stricter training and disciplinary requirements. We have more guards on the beach during Corps days. We have people available after hours for saves and assists, which have been well documented, thousands upon thousands of hours of volunteer time, people wanting to come out just out of the goodness of their hearts to be a part of this brotherhood and help serve their community, something that is truly unlike anything else in our nation today. But what about the saves that we don't mention? The young men and women who join our ranks to be welcomed into a family they may have never had? The high school or college students looking to truly prepare themselves for a brighter future? Or those looking to volunteer their time within a brotherhood that is unmatched both in near and far? So again, who am I here today? The Corps helped me lead in a direction to work lifelike for the University of Florida. I own a small business here in Jacksonville. I still work as a mortgage banker and financial analyst for one of the largest lending institutions here in the United States. I owe all of this, or owe all of this to the Life Saving Corps. And along with everybody else, it's pretty amazing here tonight that all of these people came out just on a few hours' notice because this is something we truly care about. All of us were at work earlier today or with other prior obligations and we came here tonight because we truly love the Life Saving Corps and we have faith that you guys can help get this back on track and we can continue to serve our community and do what we love. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My name is Chris Warren, I live at 278 Valley Grove Drive in Ponte Vedra. I have lived in this community for a little over 40 years and I joined the VLSC in 1994 and accumulated over 600 hours of volunteer time guarding bathers in Jacksonville Beach. I'm a former Marine as well as a member of the Theta Chi fraternity, but the greatest fraternal organization that I've been a part of is the VLSC. There's no place like it. It teaches perseverance, discipline, self-reliance, teamwork. What it teaches you is that there's something bigger than yourself and it teaches that to young people at a time where our society doesn't have that accumulated. I think we would be underserved to take that away from this community and take it out of the hands of the kids in this area. Just what we're going to ask is that you just reconsider your position and allow the volunteers to continue to sit the beach on Sundays and holidays. It's created a bond, like you see behind me, of, for me personally, over 30 years. Thank you.
Chris Dolly, 2105 Applevale Drive East, Jacksonville. Volunteer Life Saving Corps is more than a summer job. It's more than just lifeguarding some beach on anybody or water somewhere, it's more than a passing memory of a summer or two of lifeguarding with someone you barely can remember their names. Volunteer Life Saving Corps is a lifelong involvement, is a brother and sisterhood unmatched by anything most people on this earth dream to even be a part of. Our 110 years of history is all anyone needs to prove that. I'm proud to say I've been a member for the last 26 years. Growing up, I was a shy, embarrassed kid with zero confidence. Today, I'm a chief of the Jacksonville Fire Rescue Department and have been a fireman for over 22 years. I owe all of who I am today to the Life Saving Corps. Joining the Life Saving Corps is the best and hardest thing I've done to date. It taught me to be confident, how to make a decision, how to work as a team alongside many different personalities. It taught me how to lead and to be led. It has not only shaped me into who I am today, but it's strengthened every aspect of my life and it continues to do so. I'm reminded every day to continually strive to do better and I owe that all to the Life Saving Corps. I went on to become captain of the Corps and later to serve on the board of directors. Both of my children have been in junior guard program for years now. They're beyond excited at the opportunity to serve next summer and share the same bond with me. And I pray that I have the opportunity to do that because an organization as special as this one is something this community needs and deserves. In a world so divided at every turn, the model of this organization. And everything the Volunteer Life Saving Corps has been, is, and continues to be today is something every beach across the world will benefit from. I know all of you believe in your hearts that this is the right thing, this is what this community needs and deserves and it can't be swept out from under us. Long live the Life Saving Corps and all the good it does. This three-day Corps, higher class captain, Commodore, Chris Dolly, winter class of 96.
You've heard and you will continue to hear about what a great organization the Life Saving Corps is. I think one of the key things that needs to be stressed here is there are very few long-term traditions in Jacksonville Beach. And certainly, I only know of one that's over 100 years old and that's the American Red Cross Volunteer Life Saving Corps. I can tell you that I sat up there with you, Martin Williams has sat in your place, Plan Shark has sat in your place, there are older members of the council that I don't even know their names that served in the Corps here. There are people all over this country that have served in the military, have served honorably, do all kinds of things. But the one point I think needs to be made here and made very forcefully is the fact that you have a city manager that manages a city, you have a city attorney that advises you, but the facts of life, this is a political policy decision and what it takes is all of you to just vote and say, our policy is this, we will preserve the Life Saving Corps, make it happen. City attorney, city manager, it's your responsibility. That's all it's going to take to solve this problem. The Life Saving Corps deserves to be saved. Thank you.
Bonnie Donovan, on behalf of John Donovan.
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie. David View.
David View, 381 Third Street, Atlantic Beach Farm. I've lived at all the beaches here and I've lifeguarded on every beach here also, including Mayport. Been in the Life Saving Corps since 64. My brother got in the Life Saving Corps, my son got in the Life Saving Corps. Jacksonville Beach Life Saving Corps, formerly known as American Red Cross Volunteer Life Saving Corps, has been doing volunteer humanitarian services for the city of Jacksonville Beach, Duval County, and all who visit our greatest recreational asset, and that's the beach, for the last 110 years. Local organizations have voluntary, voluntary programs that are seemingly inspired, initiated to maintain at the community and Mayport levels. Historically, fire, recreation, and many human services would be examples of strictly local volunteer efforts. The point is that volunteers have been the backbone of American local government for many years. Planning, commissions, zoning boards, school boards, zephi, it has to do with volunteer firefighters, crime patrol, and election, or polling staff. Virginia Beach, Virginia, for example, as a favorite resort, city uses volunteers extensively in the recreation programs. Over 3,000 volunteers they got by host of services and coordination of athletic and sporting activities, for example. Since the mid-1960s, the city of Virginia Beach I'm talking about has been supported by volunteers who, for example, coach, officiate, and provide playing field maintenance. In addition to these types of recreation activities, volunteers have often added to the city through garden clubs, crafts, sewing programs, activities such as swimming, yoga, and dancing. Volunteers are supervised and evaluated by paid city workers and depending on the type of volunteer activity, some volunteers receive special training. America has a strong ethic and long history of volunteerism. The hungry are fed, those who cannot read are taught, those who are sick are cared for, and the land is protected and nurtured. It's a glimpse of the meaning and the benefit of volunteerism, extent of kind of volunteerism experienced in the United States of America. The local governments benefit from this. Just to make it shorter, I have a brother-in-law who lives in Jacksonville Beach here, is the Honorable Ron Swanson, father of appellate court judge. And he informed me and I grew, although I, although I do not have all the information, this would seem to be more of a political issue than a legal issue. And continue our long-lasting bond between the city of Jacksonville Beach and the Jacksonville Beach Volunteer Life Saving Corps. Thank you, Mayor.
Philip Adams, it looks like. Just state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Philip Adams, 1893 Osprey Brook Boulevard, Fleming Island, Florida. As we opened with the prayer, I found it interesting that we were praying for protection of our first responders. In 1967 in the summer, my best friend, Mike Fitzpatrick, Fitz is back there somewhere, loaded me up and brought me to the beach. I had no concept of what the Corps was about. Much like Chris Dolly, I'm a firefighter, became a fire chief, retired and spent 33 years with the city of Jacksonville. My association with the Life Saving Corps has been for 55 years, half its age. In the last 13 years, I've taught the Department of Defense, Army, Navy, Coast Guard, National Guard about responding to major incidents, how to get along with others. But it's interesting that Key, I want to come back to his first responders. These guards behind me that are members of the Life Saving Corps are the ultimate in first responders. They have to see, they have to react, they have to do things on their own with very little supervision. They're on that tower by themselves. They've got a world of backup coming to help them, but they have to go as soon as they see a problem. In fact, that's one of the main lottos of the Life Saving Corps, this one in doubt, go. And I'm hoping you will have no doubt and be able to save the Corps. Thank you.
Brian Murphy, 1516 Harbor Road Drive, Jacksonville, Florida. I grew up down here, I was born here and became a member of the Corps in 74, 1974. Been a great organization. Now, I'm just going to make this quick and short. Please don't be the city council that's known for the downfall of the Life Saving Corps that's on your police department's badges, in homes, in restaurants, on your walls in here, our building. It's not just the building, it's the membership and all these people that have come before us and will come after us. Please, help save it. Thank you.
I'm going to change it up a little bit from the rest of these guys and just give you guys just a quick little story recently in this past year. All of us in this room lost a family member. He was part of a tragic incident offshore that required a lot of helping hands. Within hours of finding out of the incident, we as lifeguards, our group of the lifeguards, were able to raise enough money to send boats, airplanes, divers, multiple different avenues of life, rescue offshore to look for our friend that we were not able to recover. The whole, the military, the coast guard, everybody's out there looking for our friend for multiple days and who comes up with the evidence of what happened with them? A boat of lifeguards. People that were out there that come from our organization are the ones that have the expertise in the diving that they learned how to be comfortable with through becoming lifeguards. We were able to fund those events, come up with the closure for the family and the closure for us as a family together. Not only is he a part of our family, his father-in-law is a part of the Corps, his brother-in-law's in the Corps, his two brothers are in the Corps, they're not just family. He is our brother who's a part of this organization with us. The group of guys that are in this room are so expansive in what they have, expertise-wise. We have military, special forces military, bankers, just anything and everything you can think of comes from a 16 to 18-year-old child in this city, grows up to become you guys on the council, or people that fight for us overseas, or firefighters, hundreds of firefighters scattered all across San Johns County and Jacksonville Beach and Jacksonville. I thank you guys for your time. I hope that this does not end the Corps because without the Corps, things like this, being able to respond to these events that happen in a special fashion... being able to respond to these events that happen in a special fashion would not happen. And I am truly appreciative of everyone here today that helped with that process. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Sago, 1829 Ardern Way, Jackson Beach. Joined the Corps in the summer of 2001, retired in 2008. Jackson Beach lifeguard for six of those years. One aspect that I wanted to address was how much experience and knowledge the Corps part of lifeguard experience is. Men and women come back to hang out and share experiences due to the Corps. It is the brotherhood and sisterhood that keeps them around. Years of experience lifeguarding, working for fire rescue, as paramedics, nurses, doctors, military members, and much more. They come back and share their wisdom, which benefits the lifeguards, both the volunteer Corps and ocean rescue. This will not happen if the Corps goes away, depriving Jacksonville Beach of this increased safety. One member I wanted to highlight is Fletcher Gradgrind, Master Sergeant William Posh. Bill came back to the Corps from active service on the U.S. Air Force Para Rescue Operations Team. This section of the U.S. Armed Forces has only three to four hundred active members. Through meeting Bill, I, along with three other Corps members, decided on a path in para rescue, a training program with a 90% failure rate. It was the experience we gained as Corps members that greatly helped us achieve this level in the U.S. Air Force. All five of us ended up serving together as para rescuing, with dozens of deployments between us, and with some of us on the deployment where Bill lost his life in helicopter crash. Bill Poshly came back to the Corps was instrumental to the reorganization of the Corps Training Program, taking our guards up another level in training, experience, and professionalism. Bill and so many others came back to the Corps to be a part of it and assist in their thriving. It was the Corps that brought them back, not a summer job working in the beach. Thank you.
Dylan Bieber.
Dylan Bieber, 23 South Street, 32266. There's a lot of history behind me, a lot of history behind those walls, a lot of history around the city, like I said in the pictures you see on the walls. Some of you may not be from here, some of you may not care about our history. What does concern you? The development and the enhancement of young minds. That's what we do, that's what happens in that building. I came in as a 15-year-old, alpha male, I know everything, my parents know nothing. Get out of here, I got this. Parents, I don't need you. I got in that building and I realized, I'm one of a thousand. I'm not an alpha. I am one of all these individuals that all they want to do is do good and have a great time doing it. We don't want anything returned. All we want is an organization in which we can be a part of, in which myself has had an unposed chair of Training Committee Chairman. I get the honor to take these 15, 16-year-olds who come in without direction, who come in thinking, "Oh, I'm just gonna do this thing." This class is different. They are taking the decision to not be paid. They're taking the path to be good people from 15, 16, 17-year-olds, and it's our job to establish that and keep that going, and enhance their adulthood, so that when they do get to college, they can make the right decisions. When they get out of college and they start opening their small business, or joining careers, they're ready for those questions. They are ready to have immediate answers, they have the confidence, they have the knowledge that they know what they're doing. Maybe they become city council one day and they heard help to lead it. I'm here today to beg you to help encourage and further the learning and the knowledge of these younger minds through the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. Please, we need this, we need this to help keep going. Thank you.
Timothy Klein, 220 Myers shooting, Neptune Beach, Florida. Hello, my name is Timothy Klein. I joined the Volunteer Life Saving Corps in the summer of 2006, and retired in 2013. I've contributed more than 1,200 hours of volunteer service to my community through the Life Saving Corps, holding the position of a surfer and registrar maiden lieutenant. Also worked for the city of Jacksonville Beach as a lifeguard, rescue swimmer, and lieutenant. In 2008, I enlisted in the United States Air Force, qualified as a para rescuer, tasked with recovery and medical treatment of personnel in humanitarian and combat environments. My selection corps started with over 100 candidates, but quickly dwindled. While watching my classmates quit on themselves left and right, I took solace knowing that as long as I followed the values instilled in the beach of the Volunteer Life Saving Corps, I could make it through anything. My Corps graduated at 11, and I received the Common Sense Award for Leadership. In 2012, as a fully qualified para rescuer, I was deployed to Afghanistan's Houbman River Valley with fellow Corps member Billy Posh. On that deployment, we were recognized with the General William H. Turner Award for Most Strategic Air Crew in the Air Force. By the time I left the military in 2006, members of Volunteer Life Saving Corps made up over 1%, but the most highly-trained rescue specialists in the world, constantly bringing back new information and techniques to the Life Saving Station. The story is not unique to para rescue career field. The Volunteer Life Saving Corps has a long and strong history of members taking values instilled in us and excelling in future endeavors. Jim Thames, one of the first qualified U.S. Navy SEALs, was a former member and marathon winner before he was taken from us in Vietnam. Former member and honored retired Bill Reagan, the Green Beret in the Cold War, was one of the first qualified military free-fall parachuters. His parachutes number was in the double digits, while mine was somewhere around 18,000. Retired Admiral and former member Gardner Howell, after attending the U.S. Naval Academy, qualified as a SEAL and went on to command the U.S. Special Operations Troops in the Pacific, and later the U.S. Naval College. Thanks in large part to the Volunteer Life Saving Corps, the city of Jacksonville Beach has made a sizable impact on our greater community. It's not an understatement to say that values we instill in our members come from two places: the eternal desire to serve, and the external accountability to your Corps brothers and sisters. Our ocean rescue and lifeguarding operations are essential, and instilling accountability are the lifeblood of our organization. It allows us to pass knowledge through the generations. We have a proven track record of benefiting our members and producing competent and engaged citizens. Safely put, we step up because it's the right thing to do. There's no summer job in the world that would motivate me to put my life on hold and fight for survival, but for the Volunteer Life Saving Corps, it doesn't take a second to call it. These values are instilled in me by the men and women you see behind you, and the community that raised me. I urge you to take the time, make every possible effort to save the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. I promise you, hard work doesn't scare us, and the office you've chosen to occupy, I hope it doesn't scare you either. Don't allow the short side of bureaucracy to hide back our history.
My name is Mikey Atkins, 1805 Washington Circle West, Jacksonville, Florida. Joined Volunteer Life Saving Corps in the winter of 1974. This organization was part of my life long before then. Part of my life in 1994, the day I was born. My father before me, he joined the place in the winter of 1980. A lot of these guys back here knew me long before I knew who I was. I was told, we were all told to invite our friends and family out here, get as much support as we can. I made about three phone calls, because this is my friends and family. These people already knew what was going on, they already knew I could be here. A lot of people had a lot to say, and I've been having a lot of time to think about this, and I really can't think of much to say, because I still can't wrap my head around this. I can't understand why this is happening to our organization. Why are we getting rid of 110 years of public service to our community? Why are we wasting taxpayer dollars when we have a group of individuals thoroughly trained in life-saving first aid, who are ready and willing to respond on Sundays and holidays? It makes no sense to me. I want my kids to enjoy it, just like my dad saw me enjoy it. I'm also the instructor for the Volunteer Life Saving Corps this year. Several of my recruits are here tonight. I want them to experience what I experienced. I want them to be shaped the way I've been shaped. I really don't have anything else, it just, it pains my heart to see such a wonderful organization be shut down in the blink of an eye, when I've never been given one good reason. We've done our best to figure out the Department of Labor issues, we've come up with proposals, that the Department of Labor has said that seems plausible and reasonable, and they're still being denied. It kills me inside to be here speaking right now. I'm so happy to see all these people here, but it's on the absolute worst terms I could possibly imagine. I'm begging you guys, please reconsider this. You can see the energy in this room right now. Please, let us continue what we're doing for 110 years more. We do not want to leave, and we will not go down easily. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Maraski, live at 5456 Oliver Street South. And I just want to say real quick, I joined the Life Saving Corps in the winter of 1974, and I'm just asking you all, please, don't throw away a tradition of over 110 years of standing young men and women, just wanting to serve their community. Thank you.
Ross Giato.
Ross Giato, 1809 Forest Street, Neptune. Thank you for giving me the time to speak with you all tonight. I'll cut this a little bit short. I joined the Volunteer Life Saving Corps when I was at the age of 16, down in depressionable, and it helped teach me a lot. It was the hardest thing that I've done to this day, yet one of the best decisions of my life. It also taught me that once you start something, you don't quit. I've guarded the beach for over 10 years, and have been a member for 22. After becoming a member of this organization, I quickly realized how special it was, the selfless act of volunteering, that the Corps mission was center ground, creates a special bond amongst its members. This, along with the incredible service that it provides to our community, and the rich history, makes the Corps stand out amongst all other agencies. The training I received from the Corps, and the difference that I was able to make in protecting people of our beach, made me want to do more. It's what led me to become a firefighter, and I'm now Lieutenant with Jacksonville Fire Rescue. My time and experience with the Corps has helped me tremendously. It helped me with my success on the fire department due to the leadership skills that I gained, and also the ability to perform under stress. But more importantly, the desire that I have to help those in need, I directly attribute to my time in the Life Saving Corps. I also met my wife because of the Corps. She's also a member, and she served over eight years as a volunteer lifeguard. And I have two young boys, and we both hope that one day they'll be able to join the ranks of the VLSC, and have some of the same experiences that my wife and I did. It's my strong desire and hope that the city of Jackson Beach and the VLSC can continue to work together, as we have done for so long, so this 110-year organization does so good, so much good for this community, can continue to serve, be a positive influence upon the lives of future generations. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Gordon Roundtree. My address is 13110 Bryant Street Drive, Jacksonville, Florida, 32224. I wrote a whole bunch of stuff, pretty much all of it's already been said, I'm not gonna waste everybody's time. I grew up in Jackson Beach, I went to Neptune Beach Elementary, went to the sixth-grade center. My sixth-grade teacher was actually past Captain Scott Gilbert. This organization is a part of who I am, and I am a product of Jacksonville Beach, no doubt about it. All of these people are standing here telling you what's pretty much obvious to, I think, anyone who's willing to listen, right? And that is that shutting down the VLSC is a bad decision. It's not cooking an apple for anybody, right? Including your citizens, your constituents, and all the young people who the Corps will potentially one day help sculpt and shape, like they have everybody in here, right? To Mikey's point, I still haven't heard a good reason as to why this is happening, right? I mean, you don't have to do this. We know you don't have to do it, it's a political decision, it's not a legal decision. So, I urge you all to do what's right, to take this matter into consideration, weigh out the consequences of your decisions, and what the fallout can be to your community, right? You all hold these seats because you're here to serve this community, to protect its values, to honor its traditions. So, I'm asking you, please uphold the values of the seats you hold, right? I mean, there's nothing more, I think, purer than doing what you're supposed to do in a community service role. All of you guys are examples of that, right? There's too much at stake here. There's too many young people that have been changed by this organization not to realize that there are thousands more that can potentially be helped. You know, kids that come from bad homes, people that just need a little bit of guidance, young people that maybe just have never seen an example of what it is to be a good citizen, right? These are all the people that we help. This is like to one of my Corps brothers' points, that's what happens at the station. We help build people of good character, across all walks of life, across all economic, sociological factors, right? There's nobody that's not allowed to benefit from the Corps. And the only people that you will be hurting by taking this decision is the future generations that could have benefited from the Corps, and from other organizations like us. We should be a model for what other volunteers around the nation can do. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm not sure on this one, Sally, Sal? Looks like Devon, Devon.
Sally Demming.
Sally Demming, all right, now I see it, Sally, you have three minutes.
Sally Demming, 500 driftway, Brown and Neptune Beach, Florida, 32266. With faith the size of a mustard seed, all things, all things, all things are possible. Lifeguard station is more than a building, it houses volunteers that save lives. Mine, pulling me out from a run-out, pulling my husband out from a run-out as he came in to save me, and in so doing so, came face-to-face with a shark which took a good chunk out of his ankle. Saved my nieces and other children's and neighbors' children's many times. Jimbo Demming was crew chief of Atlantic Beach, my husband. He built lifeguard chairs, always wanting to make them better and more effective. We both were lifeguards in our younger and slimmer and trimmer days. Jimbo, 16320, was the strongest man I ever met, but due to an accident in a medical facility, left him paralyzed from the neck down. He went from 320 pounds to 89, and passed away three years ago. These lifeguards came and stayed with me, and the nurses, and were fighters, listeners, preachers, teachers, poets, artists, yoga gurus, comedians, who would cry with me and wipe my tears, and make us feel safe, and helped Jimbo off his bed with my son, and put him in a wheelchair just so that he could breathe and see the light of day. I have diabetes, and went into a diabetic coma in New York City after Jimbo passed away while visiting friends in New York. They came and took me to the doctors, they took me to the hospital where I almost died. But then TJ Klein and my son Casey came and picked me up at the airport. I was in a wheelchair along with Alex, who slipped overnight many a time, another lifeguard from here, wiped me, showered me, they went beyond any job description. Why would we say no to these incredible men and women and hack back our history? Please, I speak for everyone here, allow our volunteers to continue, support our lifeguard Corps, and just like I said before, with faith the size of mustard seed, all things, all things, all things are possible. Please take these, pass these down, realize, take it, all things are possible. This is possible, it must be possible! God bless you!
Thank you. Mr. Rick Beaver.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilpeople, my name is Rick Beaver. I currently reside at 3211 St. John's Avenue in town, and I'm a 30-year resident of the beaches. I'm proud to be Dylan Beaver's father, who just acknowledged that maybe I did a good job sitting there. That was worth the trip. But that's why I'm here tonight. My son was 15 years old, he was an alpha male, and the Corps changed his life. I was hesitant to let him be part of the Corps, but when he came to me and said, "I want to do this," want to do this, participated, went through all the training, made his mom and I very proud and made him what he is today. I think that is a key that will be lost if this situation is allowed to continue. I'm also a former city commissioner in the city of Atlantic Beach. And I'll never forget the night where I sat in a chair like you're sitting here. And we had a situation in where our hands were tied. Attorneys told us we had to do this. City manager said we had to do that. And Patricia Gilkes came up to me, who was a constituent, and she said, Rick, we elected you to change it. Make it happen, she said. I can't tell you how many years ago, it was back in the nineties. I'll never forget that moment when Patricia said, make it happen. And we found a way to make it happen. So I'm here tonight to ask you, will all these people in this room make it happen? It can happen. Thank you very much.
Tony Wright. Neil Powell, you're on deck. I'll just go ahead and start getting a little freaky.
Hello, my name's Tony Wright. Eight seven three six seven, Illinois Island, Florida. Like the thank you for letting me address. I had a lot of stuff planned out what I wanted to say and I'm being preceded by a lot of good men and women. In the winter of eighty-eight, I'm sixteen years old, that's when I joined the Corps. I was scared in my own shadow, didn't want to go outside at night, that kind of thing. I joined the Corps and these group of men at the time, the women weren't allowed in at the time, which was changed. It's changed me so much to the fact that I stayed in the Corps until nineteen ninety-five where I joined Florida Marine Patrol. It's now since been a full while of commission. I enjoy the rank of a lieutenant right now. I'm a diet supervisor, was also a member of the Special Operations Corps. I've been awarded three of the state's highest medals they give, Life Saving Award, multiple Life Saving Awards, multiple Battle Awards. I'm not bragging on myself. I'm bragging on the men and women behind me, but wasn't for me being a part of this organization, there's no way I would ever achieve what I have achieved. There's no doubt about it. Written in the steps over there, it's easy to get in, harder to stay. Where in doubt, go. Those mottos and my fellow surfmen at the time, that has stayed in my head this whole time. That's been over thirty, thirty-five years ago. So I'm up here to say, please consider this lifeguard station, the volunteer life saving corps is a gem to Jacksonville Beach. It's a gem. It has molded minds and it's almost a shame, I understand why, but the Girl Scouts had to leave, I'd love for them to hear this, something for them to strive for. With that said, I see your time going and I won't waste no more of your time, but I want to thank you very much for allowing me to come up and speak and please do what you can.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Followed by Scott White.
I'll ask very prepared remarks. Neil Powell, two thirty Pablo Road, Ponte Vedre Beach, lived in Jacksonville Beach for about twenty-five years. I've logged, I think, over three thousand hours in the volunteer life saving corps, about half of that sitting in a chair, volunteering Sundays and holidays, the other half board directors, member and running our volunteer unit for about ten years. All the while, everything, you know, everybody's talked about, you learn accountability, you learn respect, you learn discipline. You don't show up for a Sunday, you're gone. It's not like working at the movies these days or whatever it might be. I did that while working in Morgan Stanley, been there twenty-two years, senior vice president, managing over two and a half billion dollars. And like everybody in this room, we're committed. I wanted to thank you for helping bring my marriage together better because the conversation our last few weeks with my wife, we have four young children, that a volunteer three thousand hours was another hundred more, right? To keep this thing going, because that's what we all hear. And so the key difference here is not lifeguards are great, it's volunteering, your time is great. When you volunteer to serve others, you're a better person. When you volunteer to serve others to save lives, you're an even better person. And it's what you feel inside, right? And that makes you endear the people you serve. And the people we serve live right here. And so we all want to be here and we all want to come here and raise our kids here and pay taxes here and have our businesses here. That's it.
Scott White, seventeen oh one, Twelfth Avenue, North Jacksonville Beach. I grew up in Arlington, down the Corps when I was seventy, in seventy-seven. logged nine years, two thousand hours, and only two of those was I ever did I ever work Beach Patrol or Ocean Rescue, they call it. The Corps is a great community resource asset. We don't just volunteer Sundays and holidays. From this pool of people, you get volunteers to the diner run, the hammerhead run, the deck of chairs, the month run for muscular district. No one in this room was even born when the Corps was founded. I feel it'd be a great disservice to the beach community and a tragedy to dismiss the standing of a hundred and ten year relationship of service and tradition in this community without relentless effort and cooperation to try and preserve this relationship. Thank you.
Followed by Wayne Chataway.
Good evening, Rick Foster, one zero zero eight Nicholson Road, Jacksonville, Florida, three two two zero seven. I'm a townie, but my heart is a beach. I had prepared remarks, but everybody said what I was going to say, so I'll try to tell a quick story. And everyone in this room has a story like mine, no doubt. But it didn't dawn on me what the Corps did for me until I was away at college, over thirty fifty miles away in New Orleans. I was in class one day in an auditorium like this full of, you know, over two hundred people. And all of a sudden, one of my fellow students, you know, clutched up and started, let out a loud yell and it was having a seizure. I kind of stopped and looked and said, my God, the kid's having a seizure. And the whole room was frozen. The professor didn't know what to do, so I quickly went across the room, helped get him, slide him out of his chair so he didn't fall and crack his head on the ground. Asked somebody to call nine one and that was it. And that's, you know, that's not a big deal, that's no big deal whatsoever, but professor canceled class and I'm walking out and walking back to my dorm and I'm like, God, like, no one was going to do anything. Why did I have to come all the way across the room and help that guy? And it dawned on me, like, that's what we did every Sunday in Jacksonville Beach. And I was very proud of that moment to, you know, know I was a part of this organization. And, you know, it just dawned on me that's what it was all about and just was ingrained in me because of what I learned out here. And I learned way more out here than I learned at a hundred thousand dollar university.
Followed by Corey Bass.
Hello, Wayne Chataway. Been at the beach, my family's been to the beach since the fifties. So hundreds of Chataways out there. I got in the Life Saving Corps when I was sixteen. Everything I was going to say has been said by the fourth person. I think between Mr. Bond and thank God for Mr. O'Neill's remarks, that pretty much covered everything. So I think the problem's clear. If you guys are human, you are already thinking on a solution. I can't imagine a solution shutting it down, which has been talked about a lot. So I'd like for you guys to think about what's important to you, the most important thing to you that isn't your own child and that's, and shutting that down. And I think that's what we're dealing with right now. So Corey, think of your Florida Gators. Chris, think of your rotary. Chet, think of your tequila. No, but seriously, I mean, the irony, you know, I was up here five years ago fighting for a very similar thing and we kicked the cannon one. There was only one of you, I think, that was on that group. The faces have changed, but we haven't. I mean, this is a lot of people. So the solution, I mean, there's something in there that's a solution and I'm offering my services. None of you ran the belt line, so none of you can possibly think about what it's like to be us. But I'm willing to put myself on your side, put together a steering committee of someone that's narcissistic and says, no, that's not possible, and to challenge you guys. Because we do not want this organization to just be another picture in pristine museum. We want this to keep going. I don't know the city manager, but I left out the Red Sox. Saw you were red, you're from Boston, so shutting down the Red Sox. Sorry to leave you out. You just can't understand living in Boston. It is, it's shutting down the Red Sox. So just think about the most important thing that you have control over and let's make this work. It's not probably what you, it's not ideal for either side. It's going to be something in the middle. I offer my service. I have thousands of hours, past, present, and I offer more just to make sure this happens. I'm sure the people that will join. So thank you.
Tony Wright, followed by Jake Christman.
Corey Wright, two five zero nine Independence Drive, Jacksonville Beach. I served as an active member of the Volunteer Life Saving Corps from nineteen ninety-seven through two thousand seventeen. Since two thousand seventeen, I've continued to be involved in the organization in various ways. Throughout the last twenty-five years, I served as a volunteer lifeguard, held various volunteer staff positions, served as captain of the Corps, board member and board director's president. Early in my years of service, while still in high school, I quickly learned self-accountability. I knew if I were to make a mistake, it would impact other members of the organization and potentially put members of the public in danger. I learned the importance of being on time, attention to detail, how to interact with peers and peer leaders professionally, gain self-confidence, but more importantly, found satisfaction in serving the community. I was proud to be able to volunteer on Sundays and holidays and be part of something bigger than just a summer job. My volunteer experiences helped shape my career and education. The V L S C afforded me opportunities to teach CPR, first aid and lifeguard training courses to other volunteers, which led me to a career in education here in Dubal County. The teaching experiences from the V L S C made it easy for me to create a positive classroom experience for middle school students. Holding peers accountable to the standards of the V L S C provided me with critical leadership experiences, making it easier to have crucial conversations with teachers who've been teaching longer than I've been alive when I was appointed to be a high school principal at twenty-nine years old. Interacting with community members and working with other volunteer leaders as a board member helped me understand the importance of gathering feedback from many stakeholders through the decision-making process. At thirty-five years old, I was named the region superintendent of high schools and had the responsibility of supervising all high schools in Dubal County. The decision-making processes learned as a member of the Corps helped guide me through many difficult decisions as a principal supervisor. Now, as an assistant superintendent in the twentieth largest school district in the United States, I continue to lean on the lessons learned and lifelong friendships that would not have been possible without the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. I'm here tonight to ask that you dig deeper into this issue. There are solutions to be found. We just need to spend time together and sort through it and not lean on the advice of just one attorney. There are many more experts that we can involve to find solutions. Thank you.
Jake Christman, followed by Phil Giado.
Thanks, my name's Jake Christman. I'm with it, one two three, twenty zero, Lurk Harbor Drive, Jacksonville. Tradition, honor, service, self-sacrifice and friendship. Many organizations are built on these values, but few remain, and only one has stand to the test, one has passed the test of time, the Volunteer Life Saving Corps of Jacksonville Beach, Florida. The object of the Volunteer Life Saving Corps is to maintain a group of individuals thoroughly trained in lifesaving and first aid or respected, respond promptly in any emergency requiring such service regardless of time or place. The volunteers of Jacksonville Beach have worked and maintained this premise faithfully for one hundred and ten years without interruption every Sunday and holiday throughout the summer months. The Volunteer Life Saving Corps was started out of a necessity by a caring group of individuals interested and committed to making a safer Jacksonville Beach than Pablo Beach. For a hundred and ten years without interruption, the members of the V L S C have been selflessly giving their time with the sole purpose of saving lives. We find ourselves here tonight fighting and begging only for the opportunity to freely give our time like we have for over a century. This organization means so much to our community. From your children to your community leaders, people from every walk of life have volunteered their time to be part of this organization. People such as former Jacksonville Beach mayor, Lance Sharp, who was the captain during the nineteen eighty-seven season. This organization has literally raised generations of community leaders. I personally have given back and continue to serve my community as an eighteen-year veteran of the J F R D and the values and skills that were born in me in the winter of nineteen eighty-nine when I entered the Volunteer Life Saving Corps. I wish to plead to the powers that be as well as the community. Do not let this organization come to an end. For anyone who doesn't know, we volunteer our time on Sundays and holidays for free. We are standing here tonight for the opportunity to freely give our time when it seems that this behavior is in a shortage. I want you to ask yourselves, how can we allow an organization comprised of like-minded individuals that are willing to volunteer their time and train and save lives to come to an end? Spirit of Corps is defined as the love of your working comradeship, an ideal which we have held strong and true to since the TACT administration. I was fortunate enough to be the captain in nineteen ninety-seven. At this time, we had just surpassed one million volunteer hours given to this community. We have been known to put in a ten, twelve hour day on the beach for free, at times only to receive a meal for your efforts, but I can assure you, you receive way more than a meal. The pride of knowing you were serving something greater than yourself, and I feel the world needs more of this. The selflessness of two individuals gave way to the acts of hundreds of members to volunteer in the years that followed. No other volunteer lifesaving organization exists. In today's economic strife, it is more financially profitable to work Sundays and holidays elsewhere and collect the time and effort they offer. At no other job in the world can an individual gain the personal enrichment that they do from sitting on the beach, keeping a keen eye, staying on their toes and saving lives. Respectfully submitted past Captain Jake Christman, later class nineteen eighty-nine, retired nineteen ninety-six, past Captain ninety-seven.
Followed by Richard Smythe.
Good evening, I'm Sel Giado, one five two eight Park Terrace West, Atlanta Beach. I am father of Ross, father-in-law of Katie, and I'm also father of Richard, my youngest son who is also a retired lifeguard. At the age of twelve, thirteen, you know, if you're a parent, you see kids leaving the house and you see losing control as a parent. Your control diminishes. I was so thankful to have the Corps backfill that void and enable my sons to grow up to be contributing, upstanding community members, as well as Katie. I only want to echo Mr. O'Neill's comments in that there's got to be a solution, it's going to be a political solution. Assistant city managers come and go. City managers come and go. Attorneys have opinions, just like everyone in this room. They come and go. The Corps has been here a hundred and ten years. Y'all need to do the right thing and find the time to figure this out. Thank you.
Followed by Jim Emery.
Hi, I'm Richard Smythe. I'm in the twelve thirty-one, number twenty-first street, Jacksonville Beach, three two two five zero. I've lived all my life for years and I've seen the culture change, and that's what I'm going to talk to you about, is the benefit that our city gets from things that improve our culture. You've heard all the power words of accountability and responsibility and all this stuff. There's another part of the spirit of excellence that hasn't been brought up. The lifeguards here, when we are on the beach, our record is exemplary. What you get in the experience... What you get in the experience of the members from before is coming back and sharing it and the knowledge of how to handle this beach better than anyone else can ever handle this beach. When you bring in pros from somewhere else, which has happened, we've had to have help over the years because of extra large crowds or whatnot. And every single time, they've told us that they were amazed. We've had lifeguards from all over the world tell us that they were amazed at the experience that we have. And these young fellows get on the... And the young girls, they get up there. All, you know, 130 or 40 pounds of them doesn't look like they can do anything, but their experience is what has saved lives. I didn't know anything. I was just a fast runner and a spaced-out kid. And I pulled in the people that I've pulled in because of the experience behind me. I didn't know what to do. But I knew in the moment of truth exactly what to do, and it was because these people taught me. You can't teach that from just taking first aid classes and taking your beach training and all that. You can't get that. What we offer is not just unique. It has a worldwide influence on the industry of lifeguarding. We have sirens, so to speak, other organizations in Greece and in South America. We are the very first of our kind, and it looks like we're the last. We would like to stay and provide you a service that is not only a monetary benefit, but it's a spirit of excellence about our job. We do care about saving lives. We do care about making this community stand out. We do care about... You know, I'm a business owner here. I do care about the tourism trade. It keeps my job alive. And it would be a shame to see that something that is... I can't see as anything but a pure asset to the community to go away. And I appreciate your time, and I hope you will give us enough consideration to think the same thing.
My name is Jim Emery. I live at 1764 Maritime Oak Drive in Atlantic Beach. When I joined the Corps, I lived in Jacksonville Beach. I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to speak tonight. I have a two days' name that has been said twice already, so I'm just gonna do a couple stories. At a board meeting in December, when all this first came to light, a person in the room asked why anyone would want to volunteer, and said that the only reason he joined was to get paid city job. I think anyone in this room can look around, and any that heard those that spoke before me know the answer. As a recruit servant on Labor Day in 1972, I was a few minutes late. Thankfully, they needed me on the beach that day. That afternoon, I was in the right place at the right time. I was April Poltrus sisters, 15 and 17. I was going out beside the old beach. I'll never forget Paul O'Neill's brother Ken that Tuesday night when he said, "Congratulations, recruit servant, for receiving two rescues." Five minutes later, he said, "Recruit Sergeant Emery, you've been suspended until the first day of spring training." So I did it that day. It wasn't a few more hours, and I'm fine. I thought long and hard about it this next few months, but I came back in February of 73 and continued serving, never working full-time beach patrol for the city. I was a volunteer. I worked on a casual Saturday for somebody that needed to be off, that was a friend of mine that asked me to. Other than that, I was a volunteer, and I know what it means to be a volunteer. I never looked back. I continued serving and retired from Life Saving Corps in 1982. In 1983, I was honored to be elected captain and served that year as captain. I'm currently a member of the board of directors, and I'm also the old guy in Jack's Beach competition team. My one hope tonight is that you guys will do the right thing, so that my great-grandson can be the Commodore of the summer class of 2034.
Followed by Dr. Benjamin Heston.
Hi, good evening, my name is Lee Messis. My address is 14434 Lookout Place. Thank you for having us here tonight. I come from a family that has a very long history of this beach. My parents, my grandparents, my great-grandparents, and my great-great-grandparents lived here. The old cracker house my grandmother was born in that her father built with his own hands, sits right down the street from here at the beach is the St. Paul Museum Society. The Volunteer Life Saving Corps, just like that old home, are treasures from our community. They should be cherished, they should be guarded, and they should be protected. If the city is willing to put so much effort into preserving an old, stupid home that my grandmother was born in, they should be willing to protect an organization that's been around for over 100 years. I don't know many of you on the city council, I'd like to get to know you a little bit more. I don't know what ties you may have to this community, but my hope is that one of the objectives of the city council would be to protect the history, the culture, the organizations that have made this wonderful beach what it is today. I believe, as well as many others, that a 108-year-old volunteer lifesaving organization, that was the first of its kind, and now the last, I think it fits within that category of places and organizations to preserve. This type of organization, I mean, this city should be proud of. It's an organization the city should fight for. It's one of the first things that people see when they come to this wonderful beach. An overwhelming majority of the people who have ever had contact with the Volunteer Life Saving Corps would tell you how wonderful it is, the huge impact it's had on their lives, not only them, but the thousands of bathers that flock to these beaches every year. The Volunteer Life Saving Corps has been the greatest thing that has ever happened to me, and I don't say that lightly. I've had many ups and downs in my life, but the lessons I've learned, the bonds that I have made, and the values that this organization has instilled in me have helped me through all of them. This organization will make you proud, I promise. All you need to do is just get to know the organization and the people that are in it. Thank you.
I'd just like to note it for the record that the Ostrick from the Summit Cabin was moved and restored with private dollars. Now I'm glad I'm able to post a name as the director of the beaches again. With Dr. Ed Heston on the side for remembering that arm. Followed by Bradley Langenver.
Much more proud of myself, retired man. Heston, later 2000. My address is 37 Selfish, Hanover, just down the way. I pretty much knew that my brothers and sisters would say things, you know, well, and I believe they have. I think that, you know, it's been shown kind of a bit of who we are. So I'll just say, you know, a few things about us, and then I'll address you all, and thank you for the privilege. But, I mean, sometimes words are hopelessly inadequate. This is a good instance of that. The Corps to all of us is something that you... We can't describe what it means. I mean, that's a nice lifeguard chair we have there on our emblem. I remember when Coach Paul sent me up to Proctor Ace Hardware to get some lumber and paint and hardware to build those. And the reason why is because I showed up, I think, six minutes late. I was 16 years old, and I did, I think it was 50 and 50. So I lost 50 volunteer hours for being that late, and I had to do 50 just to, you know, keep my standing. And I couldn't wait to get all of that done. I was stoked that I didn't get kicked out. I don't know what kind of a thing can inspire a teenager to do that sort of thing, you know what I mean? But this can. So, just a couple of things. Before us, lifeguards around the world were swimming through waves with ring buoys. We, along with Henry Walters, developed a torpedo buoy that, I mean, that's just one of the small things. We persuaded the Red Cross winner of the field of lifesaving. That wasn't a thing before us. And so, you know, this is your community. It means really a lot to us. I joined the organization when I was a teenager, retired. Two of my brothers served. A sister of mine served. My dead brother's ashes are under the station. And, you know, it's part of us, it'll always be part of us. There's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in this room. I've had over 1,000 volunteer hours, many rescues here and, you know, in other countries where I have been able to use what I got here. And it's not just a job. At any other beach, it's a job. You clock in, you're not really that worried about it. People don't drown in Jack's Beach on Sundays and holidays, and it's been that way for 110 years. I think we have something really, really special. This is the community, and so I'll just kind of address something to you all that I think might be good. There is no faith, and no courage, and no sacrifice in doing what is expedient. If you want to make it work, there is a way for you to make it work. Thank you.
Bradley Langenver, 5505 Womack Way, Jacksonville, Florida. I would like it to be Jacksonville Beach, but prices of houses are a little high right now. So for the last 11 years, I've been okay with living in Jacksonville because through the Volunteer Life Saving Corps, I felt like Jacksonville Beach was my second home. And for just volunteering on Sundays, you know, a handful of Sundays a year, that was well worth it. It's a lot cheaper than buying a house. I'm still an active member of the Volunteer Life Saving Corps because I was put in the junior lifeguard program when I was a kid. When I turned 15, I went out for the recruit class. You're supposed to be 16, but it was worth it to me to get an extra year head start, and they never noticed. Over the last nine years, volunteering for the Corps, I worshipped the city of Jacksonville Beach for four years. I've saved nearly a dozen lives working for the city, only one while volunteering, but that one is the one I remember the most. Because there was no paycheck, it's because of what my uniform represented. Because behind me was generations of good-willed men and women who put themselves in hard way for the beachgoers of Jacksonville Beach. When we learned the history of the Corps, you know, we had some FOMO, we wished we were there, we wished we could be there when there was no city, when the hospital was 25 miles away. We wanted as much opportunity as we could to improve the lives of people at the beach looking ashore, you know, waving their arms, needing help. It didn't really matter to me at the time, you know, how much money we made for the city or that we were volunteering for the Corps. It was just great to be able to be at the beach and to be involved. Volunteering was the most important part of those nine years. That's why I did five years volunteering without working for the city. Several years ago, the city struggled to staff the beach Monday through Saturday because they had less than 30 full-time guards, which resulted in a pay raise and an end-of-year bonus to incentivize paid lifeguarding throughout the week. Meanwhile, the Volunteer Life Saving Corps, I have over 100 active members, with full force, kept the beachgoers safe. If you go even this last year to the beach, Monday through Saturday, you look down the beach and every other lifeguard chair is pulled up to the sand. If you go on Sunday, they're all by the water, because on Sundays, we put out twice as many towers out. We don't have a shortage of people willing to volunteer their time, because at least half of our people, even if they work for the city some years, continue to put many more years into the Volunteer Life Saving Corps as volunteers.
Could you just go ahead and wrap it up?
Sure. The sign outside of the station has the exact number of volunteer hours up until, I think, 2012, many more since then. So I think all we ask is that everyone in the city council contribute an extra hours with us, assess the full situation, and stand beside us as we strive to continue to dedicate our times to the community for free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karine Wyland, 4300 Martinini Boulevard. I'm now a member of the Corps. I'm a wife and a mother. My husband is past captain Dan Leonard, who has had an accomplished career with Johnson &amp; Johnson. Still, everywhere we go, when people ask him what he does for a living, he says, "I'm a lifeguard." That's the first thing that comes out of his mouth. "I'm a lifeguard." Our oldest son is a past servant. We have a nephew who's also a servant. My youngest son is 12 years old, and he's attended camp down at the station the last few years. We always imagined that one day he would go on to join the Corps like his dad and his brother and his cousin. The decision to deny the proposal of the volunteers to continue to guard our beach on Sundays and holidays will deprive my child of that family legacy. But Corps is more than a family legacy, and we are the only family with such a story. You've heard many others today with similar stories of family legacies in the Corps. Aside from the obvious budgetary and safety concerns of the decision that has been made and denying the Corps the opportunity to guard the beach, it will end an organization which is deeply rooted in our community since 1912. I've been practicing law since 2005. I have a bachelor's degree in public administration. That said, other people today who are smarter than I am say that a solution can be reached. Judge Swanson is a person smarter than I am. Michelle Barnett is a person smarter than I am, and they know that you can reach a solution. I also know that you can reach a solution. The Volunteer Lifeguard Saving Corps is a separate entity from the Jacksonville Beach Ocean Rescue, and others have given examples of how volunteer organizations have survived situations such as this. The Corps allows people to feel good about doing something special. Not everyone can swim fast, run fast, or know how to render an emergency medical care. The Corps teaches these skills to young people who want to do good, and they want to do good without pay. That's a special thing. These are people who want to give back to their community. Please reconsider the denial of the volunteers' proposal. Please reconsider the message that you're sending to our community by discouraging volunteerism. Reconsider whether you will be on the right side of history when you make a decision that will potentially render a 110-year-old volunteer organization moot. Thank you.
I do not wish to speak, but want to show their support, Courtney McCaughy and Thomas McCaughy. If you guys want to wave. Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. Followed by Trendel. Michael? Is Michael here?
Good evening. My name is Michael Hilligas. I live in 1940s Avila Boulevard in Atlantic Beach. My family's lived on the beach since the 40s. My brother was in Life Saving Corps. My son was in Life Saving Corps. I joined in the winter class of 1964 at the age 15. At age 17, the Life Saving Corps paid for me that summer to go to water safety camp, where I learned to be a first aid and water safety instructor. The following year, I got a call to teach my first class of first aid to a Girl Scout group. And so I went by the station. I took one of the first aid kids. Then on the way there, I witnessed a little girl go through a plate last sprint. There were no cell phones, but my training saved her life for when I got the Life Saving Corps. And we saved a lot of lives over the years. Jacksonville Beach is always advertised to be the world's finest beach. That's causing the world's finest lifeguards. We train each other, we support each other, and that's why we're here tonight. I served on the council of deputy beach for four years, and every time I voted, I voted in the best interest of the city, and I hope you guys will too. Thank you.
Followed by Aaron Skipper.
Followed by Aaron Skipper.
I'm Trent Duller, 536 Vikings Lane, Atlantic Beach, Florida. First off, I'm Trent Duller from Commodore, I learned class 2016. I didn't come anything prepared speech, but it's all from the heart. I know that there's no other organization where a 20-year-old can be a first aid and managing staff at a 3.5-mile beach. There's no organization where a 21-year-old can train 11 elite lifeguards for this beach. And there's no organization where a 22-year-old, as myself, can be the youngest captain in Corps history. To me, it's just something special. If you told 16-year-old Trent that you'd be the captain of this place in the strangest times in Corps history, I'd tell you to tell yourself that you're lying to me. This place is, you know, bigger than myself and bigger than everybody else in this room. And I just hope that you guys can, you know, come to agreements with ourselves and our staff and our board directors, because this place, obviously, you guys know, means a lot to everybody here. This place is special. This community really deserves the Volunteer Lifesaving Corps, because there's, like I said, there's nothing else like it. And I wish I became more prepared and bested better, bested better for all this. But it's, I really, I can't speak more because it's like beyond words of what this place is, or what all of us and the hours that we've served and the blood, sweat, and tears. There's no organization that has been passed down from generation to generation that's been so self-sufficient without, you know, you guys have definitely helped us in times of need. This organization has really been self-sufficient within its own walls, within its own staff. So I really appreciate you guys for letting us speak. The spirit of Corps, forever Corps, Corps forever. Thank you.
Aaron Skipper, followed by Randy McNeil.
Aaron Skipper, 5 minute drive. Thank you guys for having us here today. I'm actually humbled to be in this room, full of amazing people. I mean, I think you guys have meetings on Wednesdays, we have meetings on Tuesdays typically. We've had some really long ones. I think everybody here knows that. It's awesome to be a few blocks away, having a long, important meeting with all of you here. I went to UF after that, I studied chemical engineering, I moved back here. When I joined the Corps, I was 18. I moved back in, and I was 12. Actually, I'll start by saying this. I think Mr. Wright in the back of the room said one of our great sayings, "It's harder to stay in than it is to get in." And I never thought, hearing that for the past 10 years, that I'm not retired from the Corps yet. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that term, retired from the Corps. After we serve eight, 10 years, depending on how you do it, you get to retire and call yourself a member for life, which is amazing. That's why all these firefighters, I mean, chief of firefighters, special military operations, I mean, judges, doctors, from my class alone, I mean, there were over 90 people that showed up on day one. 22 of us got in. There are doctors, lawyers, I'm an engineer, I mean, nurses, people in the military, incredible people from all walks of life. And there's nowhere else that I've ever seen that you can see people that are, one, love the ocean, love the beach, two, love this place that we call Jack's Beach, three, care about other people enough to volunteer their own time consistently. I mean, for the first two years, it's every single Sunday and every single holiday. Every single Sunday and every single holiday. It's a lot of time for what, I mean, we don't ask for money, we just want to be there to save people. And, I mean, that's something that I personally care about a lot. I mean, I was driving at 2:00 AM one night, many years ago, and saw a car flipped over on the side of the road. The guy ended up having to be life flighted. He survived. This is just, I mean, everybody in here has tons and tons of stories of how they were not panicking in time of need and were able to respond to an emergency. Because of the incredible community of people that we were, you know, taught by. We talked about Bill Posh. He was huge in our training program and changing things to be much better. Tim Klein was, you know, directly learned from him, is also a very rescue jumper, and he was hugely influential for me. He was actually doing, when we were getting in, he was in charge of our training. And then, just a year after that, I was at the University of Florida, and he was serving in the military, a lieutenant in the Corps, and also going to school with me. And, I mean, we still talk. It's amazing to be, or to build these lifelong connections with people. And I came back, I know I have braces on, I look like I'm 17, I'm 27. I came back here because I love this place, I love this community. And I was shown that there is a community of people here that care about you and that are professionals. And I just wanted to come back here. I worked on a rescue for a couple of years, I'm wrapping up, I'm sorry, I know I'm out of time. I came back to be, I think I'm a rare breed here, because I'm, I think maybe the first person that's talked that is not retired and is actively in the Corps right now, sitting, volunteering on the beach, other than Trent M. I.P., there on staff. I'm part of the backbone. I've never served on, you know, a leadership role. I mean, I've taken on leadership roles in other places. I've been largely the best public speaker, and most of my engineers are the greatest And I came back because I just wanted to share some gems of knowledge with other people that are sometimes not even younger. I mean, Dan Leonard got on when he was 42? 48? 48. So thank you guys for letting us be here and asking for, you know, a path forward.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randy McNeil. I'm at 13846 Atlantic Boulevard, Park 1011, Jacksonville, Florida. I was, got in the Lifesaving Corps when I was 17 in the winter of 1980. I'm sorry. 1970, winter of 70. I was captain in 1980. And I was a past, I'm a past president, but what I wanted to say tonight, everybody else has said it. I just got notice of this meeting late this afternoon. You've heard from many people here how great the Corps is, and it is. You've heard how it creates good individuals, and it has. You've heard that the reason why we're here tonight could possibly be political. Personally, I don't, I can't fathom what political benefit any of you would have in doing away with the Lifesaving Corps. So if it's not political, and we've offered a plan that would work, that satisfies, at least according to our attorney, a plan that would work, already been submitted, and yet a quick decision comes back, made by just a couple of people, to do away with the Lifesaving Corps, doesn't make any sense. So if it's not political, it's not legal, maybe it's personal for some reason. I don't know. But I do know that all of you have heard enough evidence that your decision should be easy. Thank you.
And Molly will be waving her sign. That doesn't mean you get an excuse.
Very brief. Thank you. John Atkins, 1888 Falls Lane, Jacksonville Beach. I just want to hope that all of you have been inspired by some of the things you've heard here this evening, and that you will do your best to ensure the life of this organization. It's in your power to make it happen. It may not seem that way, but you can make it happen. Thank you.
Tom Byerly. And followed by Andy Altuney.
I'm Tom Byerly, 613 Dollar Court Road East, Metro City. I first came to the beach in 1956, and we lived in one of the McCormick apartments pretty close to the lifeguard station. And it's during the summer, so all day long, I was on the beach, walking up and down the boardwalk, and I did notice the lifeguards there. I noticed their distinctive uniforms, but most of all, I noticed their camaraderie. Well, three and a half years later, when I was 16, I was, I became a member. And that started a lifelong, a lifelong of volunteering for various things. I was a, when I was in the Army, I volunteered as a paratroop, first of 101st Airborne Division. Later on, I was a volunteer, it's called volunteers in service to America in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, the inner city there. Then I volunteered for the Peace Corps, went to Liberia, West Africa. I worked quite a few years in corporate America, but then I had a longing, a longing to do something for the community, and I mean the world community. So I went to Vienna, Austria with the United Nations, working with developing countries. And when I was in my 50s, I started getting homesick. And you know, I'd lived all over the world, and I didn't know where home was. And I talked to a number of men there, and they were in the same predicament. I mean, they were from some small village that was war-torn, and they couldn't go back there, and it'd been like 35 years, and things have changed. So I kept pondering, and I remembered the Lifesaving Corps, because when I joined the Corps, I really became my first family. And I thought, man. I took early retirement, I came back to the beach, I started working out, got in shape, I went through a recruit class, started setting on the beach till I got what people describe as retirement. And I'm not the only one who's done this. There's been many people I've seen that have left for 30 years, and they come back and rejoin the Corps. And there's something about this that's just, it's unique, it's unique in the world. Australia has some similar organizations, but in the United States, they aren't here. And 110 years, we'd like to see it keep going. Thank you.
Andrew Altuney, 1810 Seville Boulevard, Atlantic Beach, Florida. I got in in the winter of 77. I've been retired, depending how you look at it, a couple of times. My story here is, I had a stroke in 2013, and the things I learned at the Lifesaving Corps saved my life. And when I had that stroke, I was able to tell my supervisor to call 911, and the man that saved my life in the ER was an active sitting Jack's Beach lifeguard, Andrew Schmidt.
Thank you.
Jimmy Palmer, Corps of Ninety-Six, Jacksonville, Beach. I got in the Lifesaving Corps in the winter of 1989. I grew up in Arlington with the Terry Parker. It allowed me to come to the beach. I didn't realize what I was getting into. I thought it was maybe, you know, just going to be a lifeguard for the summer. But when I came down, I started shaking hands with men who had been in the Lifesaving Corps since the 1930s. And at that point, I realized that I entered into something very, very special. At 16-years-old, I absolutely knew and understood that. The Lifesaving Corps, what it does, they, earlier someone talked about the Walters torpedo buoy. And before that, there was just a ring buoy that you see on like the side of a pool. And Henry Walters developed this, you know, buoy that would cut through the surf well. So, you know, that increased lifesaving at that point. So it was a, it was a big deal. There was something that was needed, and we came up with a solution and made a solution. And the buoys that we use today are very similar. Another thing that happened in my time at the Lifesaving Corps was in American Beach, six people had drowned in American Beach, so there was no lifeguards on the beach. When we heard about that, our organization, the organization that we're trying to save right now, we sent a contingency of people down there to lifeguard at that beach, until they could secure themselves, you know, enough money or whatever it was to, you know, have guards down there. But it was this organization that was a call to arms to go down there and help. And that's what we did. And for me personally, the idea of volunteering, the idea of giving my time, I had no idea what I was getting into. But I realized that how much I get back when I give of myself. I'm currently a member of the fire department in St. John's County. And in St. John's County, I'm a member of the peer support group, if you're familiar with those types of things. I volunteer my time for that, absolutely. And what I get out of that, out of helping people who are on, go on bad calls, I call my brothers and sisters, and I make sure that they're okay, you know? And I volunteer my time. I spend hours on the phone with these people, hours, going to lunch, going to breakfast with these people, trying to help them through things. And what I get out of that is so much. But I realized that when I give of myself, and it started with the Lifesaving Corps, when I give of myself, how much I get back. It's an incredible organization. I have a 10 and a 12-year-old, and from the ideals that were instilled in me at a young age, I, as a father, absolutely instill those ideals in my children who are 10 and 12. We help people in the community. We help people when we see they need help. We get a lot out of it. We're trying to save this organization. I absolutely have faith that after hearing this, that you will come with a solution. We will come with a solution. I have faith that we can do this together. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. My name is Ed Turner. I live at 1203 Salt Creek Point Way, Palm Beach or Beach, Florida. First, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for spending the time that you have tonight. I would imagine that on your normal council meetings, you're probably home by now? No? Okay. So, you know, the common theme that you hear tonight is community, service to others, and volunteerism. You know, I just found out about this two or three nights ago. And Councilman Mazza said that he wished that every council meeting would be like this. Well, I dare guess that if we had known weeks ago, or people like myself had known weeks ago, this room would be twice the size, twice as people would be here tonight. Volunteerism is the pebble in the sea of humanity. It reaches so many folks. It is where this community really shines and stands out, exemplar. There's got to be a way to mediate this, so that the Volunteer Lifesaving Corps can say. I'm going to concur with somebody who earlier said that the Girl Scouts, it's too bad that they didn't say. I'm a Boy Scout leader, and one of the things that we teach scouts is volunteerism and service to others. And that's exactly what this organization has been doing for 110 years. So if you roll that up, volunteer and service to others, we call that love. I finally heard the word when one of them said, "I love to be here." I joined the Corps in winter of class 1980. I grew up in Murray Hill, the west side of Jacksonville. I've lived here all my life, 63 years. I didn't have a car when I joined the Corps, so I walked from the west side, or hitchhiked in order to go through the recruit class. When Russ Follin found out that I was walking from the west side, he lived on the west side, he was on our board of directors, he encouraged for the Corps to start using the pool at NAS Jacksonville, so he could pick me up and take me there. When I had to set guard, there were a lot of days, because I didn't have a car, I walked from the west side to get to Jacksonville Beach. That's love, service to others, and care of the community. I think you see the common theme in everybody who stood up here. What you're taking away is if those Girl Scouts had stayed, they would see that volunteerism doesn't matter. The community can serve, be served by paying somebody. We treat, we teach these kids, and we grow wonderful communities. And you had all these people stand up here and say how their lives were changed. And you had all these people stand up here and say how their lives were changed, the positions that they now have in life. You find that in people that volunteer. Nurture that. Continue to grow that. Allow a volunteer organization to stay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sandy Morford, and I live at 1219 Penn Monroe, Jacksonville Beach, Florida. I'm really nervous, but I'm happy to be here to speak to you, and I hope that I bring a slightly different angle. I came around to the Lifesaving Corps in 1995. I was a freshman here in Jacksonville, at Jacksonville University, but I did have a legacy of family members who had been members of the Corps. My grandfather, Charles Bernruder, and my cousin, Cleve Cooney, who's also here tonight. They called me because they knew that I was a good swimmer, and they said, "We're looking for females to enter the organization." When I heard about it, I, you know, already knew a little bit, but the reason that I was interested in joining the Lifesaving Corps was not because of a job or to make money, I was a full-time student, but it was to be a part of an organization that gave back to the public, that was there to save lives. So when I came, there had never been a female in this organization. It had been around for over 80 years, and there was rumor that the city was talking about shutting down the organization. So this seems to be that, you know, I have a little bit of a relationship that there was something that has happened before, that there's been issues with the city. But I think that what came to the table is that there could be changes made, and the Corps did that. They had to evolve. They made changes not to the standards, or the hours, or the core values, or the mission of this organization, but they did make changes so that females could enter. And I'm happy to say that I was the very first, one of two females who entered in the winter class of 1995. I was the Commodore, so I ran the bell line first and last in my class. My instructor is here tonight also, who spoke. And I look, that was after 80 years, that was how the organization evolved, and now we're at over 100 years, and it is time to evolve again, but I think that we can really come to the table and find a way to make it work. You know, I look now at this diverse group of individuals, male, female, all different ages, races, religions, sexualities, everything, and we're all working together to still perform that same mission of volunteering to save lives. So thank you all, and hopefully we can make better.
Hello, I'm Maria Powell, 3400 13th Avenue, North Jacksonville Beach, 325-0. So I joined the Lifesaving Corps when I was 16, I was a bratty kid, and I've heard that story a lot, but my TC chair member at the time, he was a pure rescue jumper, and every Sunday, I would come home, my parents would remind me that, like, "You could join any other beach, you don't have to volunteer." And my parents found a friend of a friend who knew someone that I could give me a job at Ponte Vedra and in Cleveland as a lifeguard, and it paid like $17 an hour. Mind you, this is 2012, and $17 an hour was a lot. I turned it down because I wanted to be a part of the American Lifesaving Corps. And I'm so proud that I stuck with it, because it made me the woman that I am today, standing in front of you. I have not been active the past six years, but there I am, and I will be there every Sunday and every holiday, volunteering, because I love this organization, and I love this group of people that is behind me. And at the end of the day, all we're trying to do is volunteer. Thank you.
You did it. And you guys did it with a lot of professionalism and decorum, and I really appreciate that. It's been a long time since we've had two hours of public comment, and it was worth the listening. So thank you, not only for being here tonight, representing hundreds and thousands of others that weren't able to be here, but for your service to our community, and many of you, your service to our country. So we're gonna have a five-minute recess, because I bet you guys don't want to stay here for the three more pages of agenda items that we have, but thank you for coming out, and thank you for being a service to our community. The good news is we had an advance notice, so we all packed snacks. All right, are you ready to go?
Yep.
Just have concerns. Okay. Is that it?
I think.
I'm speaking, I'm actually a CFO. Before you tonight, you have the January 2022, I'm a leadership officer for the Department of Commerce. And as always, I'm a good answer, and questions you may have.
I got it. Thank you.
He actually has a green out there.
All right. Let's go ahead and get a motion on financial report.
I'm going to be accept a monthly financial report for the month of January 2022.
Second, we have a motion in a second, so if you have any questions or comments, we stop it. Seeing none, Madam clerk, will call. Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Janson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. Item B.
Item B is seeking authorization for councilmembers to attend various trainings over the next several months. As you can see, the Florida League of Cities with their EMO programs and leadership programs are all coming up. We wanted to get an idea of who's interested in going and do all the authorizations at once.
So for the Leadership Academy I, March 11th through 12th, is there anybody interested in going?
Me.
Ms. Dumont? Anybody else? And, sorry, my computer's in the ways, I don't call on yours.
Yeah, I think Sammy and I are the only two eligible.
It's DPC weekend.
It's DPC weekend.
Visually.
Ms. Golding, are you interested in attending this?
I'm not able to attend.
Okay. So Ms. Dumont would like to attend Leadership Academy I. Let's just do this all as one motion at the end, is that okay? Leadership Academy II, December, anybody interested in attending?
Does that require a leadership one?
Right, and so then I'd be the only one available if I'm still around in December at a threshold.
So hypothetically, if I'm still here, yes. And EMO II, April 29th and 30th?
Yeah, I'd like to do that. I wouldn't be able to do it last time. What's the date?
April 20, I'm sorry, April 20, oh, there's one on April 29th and 30th, and one on September 16th.
Cocoa Beach, 29th and 30th.
I'm not sure if you have a specific kind of dates.
Okay.
I'm good for EMO II.
I'm good for EMO II in September.
Could be down for EMO II off the trixen calendar.
Okay. And those are both the dates of my two major fundraisers, so I'm really unable to attend. And then the FLC Annual Conference, I know I would like to attend.
Amen.
Yes.
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 Nichols.
Golding, yeah. Hoffman, Mesa, Golding, Dumont, Nichols?
Stokes.
Stokes.
So all except the end.
Okay, you ready for this motion, Mr. Nichols?
Here, what about the, there's one more.
JK, November 29th Legislative Conference, that is so far away. Can we do that on air? Just kidding, does anybody know they can attend that date, even if they're not sure they'll be here around?
I would like to.
Yes.
Golding.
Stokes.
Nichols, Golding, Stokes?
And Mesa.
Mesa. Okay. Anybody else? All right, go for it, Cory.
Oh, come on.
I know how you're gonna do that.
Take your time.
I'm going to reauthorize Councilmember Dumont to attend the Leadership Academy I, March 11th and 12th, 2022, at the Embassy Suites Orlando, Lake Buena Vista South, and authorize Councilmember Dumont to attend Leadership Academy II, December 2nd and 3rd, 2022, at the Embassy Suites, Lake Buena Vista South, and authorize Councilmember Nichols, Mesa, Janson, and Stokes to attend the Institute of Elected Municipal Officials EMO II training on either April 29th through 30th, 2022, at the Hilton Cocoa Beach, or on September 16th and 17th, 2022, at the Embassy Suites, Fort Myers Estero, and authorize Councilmembers Golding, Nichols, Mesa, George, Dumont, and Stokes, as well as Mayor Hoffman, to attend the FLC Annual Conference, August 11th through 13th, 2022, at the Diplomat Beach Resort Hollywood, and authorize Councilmembers Golding, Stokes, Mesa, and Nichols to attend the FLC Legislative Conference, November 29th through December 2nd, 2022, at the Embassy Suites Orlando, Lake Buena Vista South.
Second, glad you're joining, Mr. Nichols. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Madam clerk, will call. Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Janson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. Let's do the reappointment as a motion. Um, let's do the reappointment as a motion.
I'm going to reappoint Marvin Dupree to a new two-year term as council-appointed member of the Police Officer Pension Board, with the term expiring March 31st, 2024, and nominate Rudy Dean or?
No, just do the reappointment.
Yeah.
So, end of 2024.
Yeah.
Second, we have a motion in a second to reappoint Marvin Dupree. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call call. Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. The next one, we need to nominate either Mr. Dean or Mr. Hewish for the Police Officer Pension Board. I will open the floor for nominations, starting with Mr. Jansen.
I nominate Lance Hewish.
Ms. Dumont? I would like to nominate, uh, Rudy Dean, and, so we'll close the floor for nominations and comments or questions, and I'll just go ahead and make my comment. The reason why is because Mr. Dean already has an affiliation with the police department, and with the amount of vacancies that we have, um, Mr. Hewish could easily be, easily be appointed to the firefighter pension board, so just because of that already affiliation with the police department, I would prefer Rudy Dean to serve on that one. Ms. Golding?
I would want to concur, uh, with the mayor on that as well, for, um, based on the interview that we had with Mr. Dean, it was obvious that he has a longstanding relationship with the police department and a passion to serve in this position on behalf of the, the police officers he's been working with.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? So when we do the roll call vote, either say Dean or Hewish. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember.
Councilmember Mesa?
Dean.
Councilmember Nichols?
Dean.
Councilmember Stokes?
Dean.
Councilmember Dumont?
Dean.
Councilmember Golding?
Golding.
Councilmember Jansen?
Hewish.
Mayor Hoffman? Dean. So Rudy Dean will be appointed to the Police Officer Pension Board. Uh, the next item is a reappointment, if you want to go and do that as a motion.
I'm going to reappoint Gerald Chandler to a new two-year term as a council.
Gaylord Cantor.
Chandler?
Gaylord, yeah.
Gaylord, what did I say?
Gerald.
Gerald, wow. But I'm really, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm going to reappoint Gerald Chandler to a new two-year term as the council-appointed member of the firefighter's pension board, with the term expiring March 31st, 2024.
Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call call. Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. For the final one, since we only have one eligible applicant, I would go ahead and just listen and get as a motion.
I move that we appoint, uh, Dean Lance Harsh to a new two-year term as council-appointed member of the firefighter pension board, with the term expiring March 31st, 2024.
Second, any last for correction, the last name is Hewish. You got through that big question so well, so we're not even judging right now. Any other, uh, questions or comments? Madam Clerk, call call. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, so Lance Hewish will join the firefighter pension board, and thank you guys for your patience with this process. Um, I think we have a good system in place, and I also think that we have some really good appointees to the pension board, so I think we were, it was, um, worth the extra legwork, um, for both the reappointments and the newly appointed, so thank you all for your patience with that. And item E. Looks like it's Mr. Baron.
Mayor Council, that's Baron, Director of Public Works. Uh, what you have before you is, um, a cost share allocation agreement for approval with Atkins Builders, um, I'll have to queue up the mat. So Mr. Atkins has secured a piece of property directly across from the South Water Tower. Uh, he's held it for quite a while, he's ready to develop that piece of property. Um, as part of, uh, his, um, desire to develop that property, um, we've got an issue because it's, it ends up being a new corner lot. Um, it come up in, in some of the original conversations as to how to handle that, um, and with, between us and our requirements of what we needed to do, uh, the decision was made that we should participate in this agreement to actually make this a through street all the way through. So with that, what you've got is the division of, of Mr. Atkins will be improving the Gordon Avenue side of the property to include drainage and everything that needs to be done on that side of the property, and the cost share would be for continuing the road on around the corner on 21st Avenue South to actually make that feed into, uh, Gale Avenue. As part of that, as part of this is being driven, we have a sewer line that actually runs from Gale and 21st to Gordon and 21st, uh, that needs to be all pulled up and relayed because it's got a belly in the middle of it, so we have a drainage, or we have a sewer issue that we need to address, which then warrants for us to be able to go ahead and have the sewer line relayed and then the road laid over the top of it. And Mr. Atkins has agreed to do that as part of his project with the cost share in this before you.
Thank you, Mr. Baron, any motion?
I'm going to approve a cost share allocation agreement with Atkins Builders, Inc., for public right-of-way improvements to connect Jordan Avenue and 21st Avenue South for an amount of, amount not to exceed $128,626.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call call. Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. Now you go take them to dinner. Not you!
I'm taking a heck of a people out of your own business.
Thank you. Uh, and I guess. Your waiting's so long, it's not worth it.
Alan Poppin, Director of Mission Energy. So this is a project, um, repairs for our transmission lines have been identified over the past couple, probably, um, about two years ago, we did drone inspection of all our lines. Now we're ready to make the repairs to those lines. In order to do that, um, we're going to, we're doing a similar project that we did for Sanson Substation, for those that were around back then, it was a VPC contract, engineer for pure construct type, um, what you thought it was like called design build, but it's really not that, but we're doing a similar process here. In order to do that, just like we did with the Sanson project, we like to go out and do a 30% design, so they have, they, they gotta see what's really out there and what structures we need to rebuild before they can give us an actual drop dead price where it doesn't go over that price. Um, in order to do that, what we need to authorize is 30%, it's about a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand dollars to do the, um, 30% design to see where we're at and see if we can, you know, make this work under our existing budget, or, or we can see what's changed based on the environment we're in now with materials, so we need to do this to see if this is something we can move forward with or not. Regardless, the engineering would be good to use with any other firm if we decide to move forward with something else.
Thank you, a motion?
I'm going to reward RFP number 042021, Designable Contract for Transmission Line Repair, to Bernard McDonald, and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the final contract.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call call. Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries, item G.
So RFP is for installation of underground infrastructure, this is directional board, which we do to put our lines underground. Um, in the past, we've actually received multiple bids on these type of projects, we've received one bid, and this is fortunate for us, it's the same company that's done our, our work here for several years. Fortunately, this is not an exclusive agreement, we do have an RFP through FMPA that we can utilize, we have a couple other vendors that we can use in case either they're not available or we feel the price is too much, we go, you know, ask for a different price, but asking for approval to move, uh, forward with Hart, um, for underground installation, uh, installation of underground infrastructure for the next few years.
Thank you, your motion?
I'm going to reward RFP number 082021, Installation of Underground Infrastructure to Hart Utilities of Jacksonville, Inc., and authorize the mayor and city manager execute the final contract.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call call. Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. Um, and I, when I said a three-page agenda earlier, it really discounted the fact that it's a 519-page packet, so I'm sorry that I undersold, uh, the amount of work that went into this agenda, but thank you guys all for working through it. Um, okay, the next step is the resolution, do we want to discuss that first?
Uh, just wanted to say that our, our special magistrate has been performing, uh, services for the city now for a couple of years. Uh, the city's been happy with the performance of magistrate, so we're looking to do an extension of the existing contract.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution by title?
A Resolution of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, Extending the Contract Between the City of Jacksonville Beach and Lewis Longman and Walker, PA, for Primary and Alternate Special Magistrate Services for Coenforcement for a One-Year Term, Providing for Adoption of Recitals, Repeal of Prior Inconsistent Resolutions, and Council Decisions, Severability, and an Effective Date.
Thank you, any motion?
I'm going to readopt Resolution Number 21032022, Scanning the Contract with Lewis Longman and Walker for Special Magistrate Services.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call call. Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. Okay, do you want to do a staff report before we start this one, or we start the public hearing?
Um, yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce this item, this next item, uh, is an ordinance that's going to go over the charter review amendments that have been drafted by our outside attorney, Cliff Shepard. Cliff is here tonight, um, I don't know if he wants to do any introductory statements, but you do have in front of you a total of 16 drafted ballot initiatives, along with what the charter would look like, if any individual of those, uh, ballot initiatives were adopted, so that you have some cross-reference. Uh, and I think what we're looking to do on first reading is find out, A, if you have questions on any of the languages drafted by Mr. Shepard, uh, and he would be more than happy to explain why it's drafted the way it's drafted, and then B, if there's an opportunity to whittle this down, I think that would be, um, complying with, uh, his recommendations that he do not want to overwhelm the voters by putting too many initiatives on one individual ballot. So I think as he indicated in our last, uh, discussion about this, the purpose of the first ordinance reading would be to whittle this down to those, uh, those, uh, referendum items that you want to move forward with for the November ballot. And the question of which, which of those they are and how many of them will be up for you and obviously Mr. Shepard and, uh, Ms. Robinson, and share their experience with you to make the best decisions.
Thank you, we'll go ahead and start the public hearing, and then we'll, um, bring you up for comment questions. Um, Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title?
An Ordinance of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, Submitting to the Electors of Jacksonville Beach, Proposed Amendments to the Charter of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Providing Ballot Titles, Summaries, and Text for the Proposed Amendments, Providing Directions to the City Clerk, Providing for Severability, Providing for an Effective Date for Approved Amendments, Providing for an Effective Date for the Ordinance.
Thank you. This ordinance is before the council for a public hearing and consideration on its first reading. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2022-8171. I do not have any speaker cards with regards to this item. Would anyone like to speak in favor of the ordinance? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? Would anyone like to speak at all about the ordinance? Seeing none, no comments, I'll close the public hearing, I have a, a motion to adopt.
I'm going to reapprove ordinance number 2022-8171 regarding amendments to the Charter of the City of Jacksonville Beach on the first reading and schedule a second reading for March 7th, 2022.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Cliff, do you want to go ahead and get us started? It's nice to see you in person and not just.
It's nice to know that I'm not just someone's head in avatar, I'm, I'm pleased with that, I guess this thing is on, but at any rate, uh, I have no problem talking, so it's not an issue for me. Uh, I wanted to, uh, first to say that while Mike is 100% accurate that you may wish to reduce the number of questions on your ballot, um, whether you do so, particularly in light of the fact that there seems to be a little public concern that you got too much or too little or anything else, that's, that's something you may want to say, oh, this, this, get it over. But, now that having said, the only input I've had since this final draft was provided to you, uh, was, actually, I can't remember about this, I think it was yesterday, but it was an issue that was brought up, I believe, by Ms. Golding, and I don't, did you get the email I sent late this afternoon? Okay, well, I, at any rate, it had to do with a, a request or a consideration for a provision, uh, that dealt with what happened when you do a charter amendment, I initially referred to, and this is, I think, question 15. And the idea was, if, while the ordinance provision that I drafted per the request, that'd be something that y'all could consider when you want or didn't want, and we can go from there. Um, we, it covered citizen initiatives to bring ordinances that are new or alternative, or repeal ordinances that they don't like. It was not about charter amendments, which are dealt with in terms of the initiative procedures through 166031 of Florida statutes. So you could do your own, but you don't need to, as already provided for. Uh, however, the concern I was later told today was that, and if I'm wrong, okay, but I got it through a third party, and that was that if you had two competing charter referendums and both passed, how would you deal with the conflict? So to the extent that's a concern, I drafted a provision based on the Humvee, uh, the city charter that has such like that, I'm not sure how much of a thang it will all be, but I will certainly share it with you, uh, because I brought it up on my phone, since I wasn't sure whether at least had time to get it to you. And basically, it adds to the, uh, section 15 question, the following language as a new subsection C after what is subsection D? Subsection D is titled Results of Election, and that obviously would be a referendum to either bring in a new ordinance or repeal an existing ordinance. Subsection C is titled Results of Charter Referendum Election. Again, the whole section doesn't deal with charter, except in this one place, if you choose to use it. In a charter referendum election held pursuant to the procedure set forth in Florida Statute 166031, if two or more measures adopted or approved at the same election conflict in respect to any of their provisions, they shall go into effect in respect of such, of their provisions, as they're not in conflict, and the one receiving the highest affirmative votes shall prevail insofar as their provisions conflict. Essentially, it means that if both are passed, they're both adopted, and whatever they conflict on, the one that got the higher votes is what would control. So that is a potential solution to this issue, if you still want this provision in, or if that's something you want to get, uh, to talk about. I, I assume that that's the primary thing, if there's going to be any discussion, that it would be on, but there may be others, and I'm happy to answer those questions. The only other thing that was added since, uh, we last discussed it, because I think it was just an oversight, was a question 16, which is providing for periodic charter reviews, so that rather than waiting for another 40 or 50 years for the next one, you'll have a time schedule. Uh, and the suggestion here, uh, was that it would be done, God, I gotta go back and look at it now, but, I think it was, we, we had said a number of years, and I gotta go back and I'll tell you how many. Periodic charter, charter reviews will be done every five years, uh, or at earlier, uh, if the charter council decides on, so that's the section 10 amendment. Um, and if that's something you, uh, like, or if you want to change, uh, seven, five years, we'll write on that. If there's a different amount of years, we can certainly change it. The nice thing about first reading is, since I don't have to change title for anything you want to do, we can put it in for the next and final reading on March 7th. So that's it.
Thank you, um, Ms. Dumont?
Um, thank you. So, um, number one, that's in favor of a long ballot, um, because you get a lot of drop-off, so I think 16, on top of everything else that everybody's going to be voting on in, uh, November, will be a little bit cumbersome. That being said, I think also putting the most important aspects of the charter amendment, that, of how you want to amend the charter, in front of people sooner the better is what we should do, so, well, yes, I would love for it to be gender neutral, that's That's one that does not need to be done this year, as opposed to clarifying regular meetings or calculation of full terms. So those are things that have substance to them, not that gender neutrality doesn't have substance. So I went through them all, and question 3, 5, calculation of full terms, clarification, regular meetings, and special meeting process, detailed filing fee and election assessment, removal of city manager, removal of city attorney, bringing city attorney in-house contract, which is question 13, and then 14, add more ordinance and resolution to review the city attorney. I think those are the most critical. Out of those are the critical ones. I would narrow it down to the city manager, the city attorney, and, oh. I don't remove any of the clarifying. So calculation of full terms and the filing fee. I think those have the most teeth and have most impact on future councils and how we operate.
Can you state the question numbers? Do you have any?
Oh.
Your priority, your top priority ones?
Okay, the top, or the top, top, the top of the top.
The tippity top.
Okay, the tippity top. Question 3, question 9, question 10, question 12, 13, 14.
Anything else? Yep. Ms. Golding?
So, direct to Cliff's explanation. The, I brought this up when we had the briefing in, and just to remind you all, because the briefing was a good long time ago, we did have an issue back in 2004 when the height limit was on the ballot. We had two different height limits on the ballot, so they were conflicting in our terms. And there was question, what would happen if both of them passed? And so that's the whole reason why I felt that we needed to make sure that that was included. There weren't a lot of cities that I found that had that, and the state didn't seem to cover that either. So I do think what Cliff has proposed, I think that that's good, and I hope that, you know, we will have an opportunity to consider that if it's something that we intend to move forward. If not in November, I'd like to see us at least discuss it and consider it for the next election, because I personally think that it's good that we give citizens the opportunity to have this ability to either propose or repeal ordinances, but, and then also to provide this way to resolve any conflicts in two conflicting referendums. As far as Mr. DeMong's suggestions, I do think that we definitely want to have the, I def, let's see, let me go find them. I agree, I can do without the term of the tribe right now. And I think, yes, 3. I definitely think 10 and 11, 12, 13, 14. It sounds similar to yours, doesn't it? For sure. I think those are definitely critical or priority.
I think yours were different. You didn't include 9, but you added 11 from Ms. DeMong's suggestions. So, Mr. Nichols?
I personally have no problem at all with including all of these on this upcoming election. I feel that this council is the one that went through the charter review after November. You're potentially going to have a different council and having, I think it makes sense that because this council was on it and went through the process that we put them all in November, they all seemed pretty straightforward to me. I think the community that is well aware it's based off of charter review, and I just, I, you know, I wouldn't think any of these would fail. So I think we go ahead and move forward with all 16 of them.
Mr. DeMong?
I appreciate what Mr. Nichols says with the council and the turnover. That's why I left out the basic stuff, the gram, you know how much it hurt me to pause on or pass on grammar and punctuation corrections. I pass on, because those are like easier. I think the, it would have, some of these would have more of a likelihood of failing because of voter drop off. So those who are really, don't want to see things change, or don't understand it, they're going to make sure that they vote no, or people who would be thankful of it, they get tired, because we're the last thing on the ballot. So putting the critical stuff with this council that we decided no needs to be addressed, especially after the last city attorney piece that we realized a lot of stuff needs to be updated. And then leaving gender, grammar, punctuation, all that stuff for, it could go on the spring 13, 23 ballots, this spring 2023 ballot, so it really wouldn't be that long off. And yes, it's a low voter turnout, but it's one more, it has a place that I think would be better than 16 questions in addition to everything else that's going to be on that ballot.
Yes, and we specify...
Mr. Nichols, sorry, you're out of order. Mr. Vanson?
Just for clarification, 15, did you say that the state does have a mechanism in place by statute to...
For charter to have, has to have to amend it by initiative referendum, yes. For breaking some sort of a tie if you have conflicting ordinances or conflicting charter provision, no. So, and ultimately, after several rounds of trying to figure out exactly what I was being asked to do, that is accurate. There isn't one. There's also very few around the state that do such a provision, but the Jacksonville Beach is one, and so I just took the suggestion, I think it was made by Ms. Golding, and put that language in. And it's simply limited to if you had two conflicting charter resolutions that were passed. It has nothing to do with the rest of section 15, by the way, or question 15. It would otherwise, if you say, we don't want this ordinance referendum thing regarding ordinances and repeals and initiatives, but we do want to break charter issues if there's comes up, then it would be changed. The question would be changed, it would be a new section standing on its own. Right now, I've included it with the other stuff that talks about initiative referendum, because that's where it belongs. But those two things are divisible, because if one just deals with, you have conflicting amendments to a charter passed, what happens if that occurs and they conflict? And it can stand alone by itself. It has nothing to do with everything else in that section.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to review what you've provided, you know, in writing to, other than just hearing it right here.
Sure. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily agree that there's, that drop off is necessarily going to occur, that it's going to be a negative impact on this. If we can, if there's some statistical analysis that shows that a longer ballot leads to more failure, I would like to see that. Otherwise, I think we just move forward with all of them. And I think that my other concern with putting these off is going to push future ballot initiatives to another year or, you know, to a future. I'd rather go get these done, and let's address the other ones that we want to, that this council is talking about.
I can write about that much insight. There's an actual term for it, it's called ballot fatigue. But what usually happens is we're somewhere in a list of long questions, there's something or some things that are controversial, that people don't understand and are scared of, and then it reflects down ballot. So I don't know whether any of that's the case here. I assume that nothing on here is particularly controversial. But if that were not true, then ballot fatigue is a real thing.
And that's why I said, you wrote these in a way that they're very brief and straightforward, and they should not create ballot fatigue, I would...
But that, but they're within a longer ballot, and there'll be state amendments that we don't know what is going to be on ballot at this point. So it's not necessarily that this on its own, but it's within the context of a larger ballot, and it is a real thing. And normally, when people aren't sure, they just vote no. They just vote to not change something, so...
I don't know that to be true.
It is. It's, it is.
I would like to see statistical analysis.
Ms. Golding?
I'd like to suggest that tonight we consider not eliminating anything, but we have substantive discussion about it, and everybody have an opportunity to look at the information that Mr. Shepard was going to provide us about the question 15, have a chance to digest it all, and then on second reading, we have the opportunity to do, to do the striking if we want. This is just, it's a suggestion. But the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, based on Ms. DeMong's priorities, I counted six, so that means there's still 10, which is still a lot if you're looking at it, right? Because there's 16, is there not 16?
16 now.
Questions, right? You had seven? Okay. I guess I must have missed one, because I only had six. Yeah.
I have six as well.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, I think if we're going, if we are going to cut any, I think we need to at least put more than six on the ballot, just because we're still pushing 10 down the road, and I'm not sure that's a good idea either.
Mr. Staphopoulos?
This is more a procedural question for our consultant attorney, Mr. Shepard. If they were to pass first reading ordinance tonight with all 16 items, and then get to second reading and want to whittle that down to some smaller list, would that be a problem that would require an additional reading? And if they were to do the reverse, which is pick six tonight and then want to add items back in on second reading?
That would be a bigger issue.
If you could explain what's the difference between...
It would be a bigger issue. It probably would not be a legal issue, but it would be one where people could have a legitimate, I'm concerned, and you therefore, as elected officials, might be concerned. The reason that you can have them all and then take them off is because then anybody who's interested in any of them has enough notice to be here. If you say, you know what, we decided we want these six or these seven, depending on how we count it, and that's what we want to go forward with, and some stuff, my issue's not going to come forward now, I don't need to come to the meeting. Legally, nothing changes in the title. So legally, at least according to Supreme Court, unless they looked at this matter differently than they did the one where they made that decision, you would be okay. But as a political matter like this one out here, four, you may want to treat it a little differently.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Based on Mr. Shepard's advice there, I would say that we move forward with all 16 tonight. We have no one in the audience, and I don't know about anybody else, but I have council member fatigue. So I think we probably all do after 52 speaker cards, so, you know, let's, you know, think about it for two weeks, and then we can whittle it down when it's not 9 o'clock at night and no one's in the audience that has concerns or input.
Thank you for that view terminology. Mr. Jansen?
Yeah, just real quick, I agree with Ms. Golding and Cliff that we should have all 16. I want some time to review 15, question 15 as well, so, and that way we can whittle that.
Mr. Mesa?
Fatigue right there. I agree, the councilmember Jansen and Mr. Stokes and Ms. Golding, and question, I know the amendments we're going to vote on, do they have to be 51 or 61%? I know...
It's 50% plus one.
50% plus one, okay. Just, thank you.
Go majority.
You may ask? No other lights? So we will vote on it as presented without eliminating anything, and we will do some homework and send Mr. Nichols some studies between now and the second reading. Madam Kirk, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, let's, we didn't do that. There we go. We did. Because this, the discussion happened after the motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Final item?
Thank you. Beautiful. And Mayor, briefly, since I sent that to Elise and Ms. Golding, and well, she didn't get it yet, she can send it back for the rest of you. I don't have all of your email addresses, and y'all will get this section. It's just a very highlighted portion I've read, but you'll have it easier to open in heaven.
Thank you. Okay, final item? No? Oh, Madam Kirk, we read the ordinance by title.
In ordinance of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, to amend Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Division 3, Procedures for Adoption of Ordinances and Resolutions, Section 2-51, Enacting Clause, Providing for Adoption of Recitals and Legislative Findings, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Severability, Codification, and an Effective Date.
Thank you. This ordinance is before the council for public hearing and consideration on its first reading. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2022-8172. Would anybody like to speak in favor of the ordinance? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? Would anyone like to speak on the ordinance at all? No? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Can we get a motion?
I'm going to re-approve ordinance 2022-8172, pending city code of ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 3, Section 2-51, Enacting Clause, on the first reading and scheduled second reading for March 7, 2022.
Second. Sorry, I shouldn't have asked for a staff report before we got into all that. Anybody?
Well, this will actually require a change in the charter as well, Madam Mayor, members of council, so that's one of those things that maybe we should go in the hover at the next meeting as well. So this 1-9 of the charter has to be changed to provide for the same language that would be provided for in the city code, Section 2-51. And that's really good. And the purpose of all of this is to bring our language in conformance with how it's normally done. So right now, we enact our ordinances by saying, be ordained by the City of Jacksonville Beach. It should be the City Council of Jacksonville Beach, and that's the substance of the change entirely.
Done. Any questions or comments? Madam Kirk, roll call. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.